Ladies and gentlemen, I am advised by the town clerk that we have a quorum. Would you take your seats, please? Ladies and gentlemen, a quorum being present, I call to order the third and final session of the 2018 Annual Town Meeting. Deborah Brown, would you please come forward and sit in the front row? And Joyce Jaws Wiki. We start this evening...well, I have a couple of announcements. I announced that the...at the first session, that the Town Meeting Members Association annual meeting would be held on Wednesday, the 21st...well, there is...of June, there is no such date, at least not this year. It will be held on Thursday evening, June 21. I have three corrected votes from the second session. In Article 17, the Washinsky Amendment failed by a vote of 85 in favor, 116 opposed and two abstentions. The main motion under Article 17 passed by a vote of 200 in favor, five opposed and six abstentions. And Article 19, the main motion failed by a vote of 61 in favor, 145 opposed and three abstentions. Article 23, the motion...main motion and only motion under Article 23 is on the Gray Supplement Number Three that was passed out at the checkers table this evening. A motion, now the main motion, not a substitute motion, offered by Mr. Spiegel and seconded by Mr. Lynn Jones, that the town hereby requests that the school committee propose a new name for the Edward Devotion School, et cetera, in the words of the motion on the Gray Supplement. Let me say a few words about its predecessor, which was on page 23-2. The problems with the motion that this one replaces were the strong implication that the school committee had the power to change the name of a school building. The school committee has the power to name rooms within a school, but not the school itself. That is the exclusive province of Town Meeting. And both of these motions indicate that the...if the school is renamed, it's an interim name. Well, there's really no such thing as an interim name. This Town Meeting cannot bind future Town Meetings to change the name once again. And until Town Meeting acts again on the name of the current Edward Devotion School, if these...if this article passes, if the main motion passes, the name of the school will be the Coolidge Corner School. Finally, I've been asked by a few of you that...about the role of the naming committee in all of this, and the process for changing the name of a public facility is governed by Section 6.8 of our bylaws. And it provides that the naming committee makes a recommendation to Town Meeting. If it's a school facility, of course, the naming committee will take into account the views of the school committee, and Town Meeting then acts. Well, in this case, in the case before you, the naming committee has not acted, but that's not a fatal flaw. It's not like the requirement that the planning board take a position on a zoning article before it comes before Town Meeting. Nevertheless, it's not in accordance with our bylaw procedure, and if at all possible, should be observed in the future. There are many speakers, and I'll ask that, to the extent that you're able to do so, please don't repeat points that have made...been made by previous speakers. Ms. Brown? And all speakers will be limited to five minutes, other than the school committee, who have allotted seven. And given the number of speakers I have on the speakers list, I'll enforce that time limit pretty strictly. Ms. Brown?
Yes. Does the clock stop starting now?
Yes.
All righty.
Uh, Ms...the other Ms. Brown, you might as well go to the rear of the auditorium.[363.12][363.12](Laughter) Because we're...it's going to be a long, long time before we get to you. Deborah Brown, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Deborah Brown. I am one of the co-petitioners for warrant Article 23, which...my name is Deborah Brown. I am one of the co-petitioners for changing the name of the Edward Devotion School. That's warrant Article 23. I first want to thank the school committee, the select board, Town Meeting members, the students that are here. I know that's kind of a tough night, parents, and the general public that showed up tonight to participate in this discussion. I think one of the first questions that we ask...that people ask is, you know, why do you want to change the name now? And it's almost self-explanatory. Now was a good time because the building was under construction. It just seemed like an opportune time. More importantly, why did Ann Greenwald and I decide to file this warrant article? Why did we start this process? Because we believe that children need a safe place to go to school with honor and dignity. We don't need...we don't believe that there needs to be a place where racism, whether it's historic or current, is sanctioned in any way by the community. There has to be a presumption that every child entering into our schools is equal regardless of race, color, national origin, gender, ability, or religion. And I also want to add that at no point have we said that we want to erase Edward Devotion from the town's history. Instead, what we want to do is to contextualize who Edward Devotion was in his time as compared to now. And finally, we want to provide an open and inclusive naming process as we go forward. Now, I'm going to acknowledge that a lot of people love Devo. They love the name Edward Devotion. And Ann's going to talk about that love more, but what I want to talk a bit about is what that name means to some people. And the name has a legacy to it, and it's slavery. And slavery was about taking someone's freedom. And I don't care what you hear, slavery as an institution was not kind. I believe that whites need to acknowledge that there are benefits associated with race that include power and position, and that was one of the reasons that Edward Devotion had a slave, that many others had slaves in the early days of the colony. And they weren't just African, by the way, they were also Native Americans. With a name change, we also get to acknowledge the contributions of people of color and women. And, you know, people of color have negative emotions associated with slavery, and that's fear, isolation, anger, and powerlessness. I want to point out that I would contend that it's not clear to me that Edward Devotion would meet today's naming standards. Represents the core values of a school system, for example? I think we kind of know the answer to that. Other factors? You know, we've changed names in this town before, and so we can't get locked into we don't change names. Slaveholders actually took the names of many people, and so we need to think about it in that context. And New England, like so much of this country, went from slavery to racism to criminalization to microaggressions, and we've been stuck causing an intergenerational trauma among people that includes African-Americans in particular. And one thing that I did find was that women...women of color, African-Americans, seem to suffer most, and it doesn't matter what the income is. George Bush said something at the installation of the African-American History Museum. A great nation does not hide its history. It faces its flaws and corrects them. I think that we're capable of doing that here. I think part of that process includes restorative justice. And when I say that, we can look at a name change as correcting things that have happened in the past. It allows us to focus on healing as opposed to reiterating, you know, the same old sagas of past, 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 but let's look forward. Finally, I have one question to ask you. Now that you know, what would you say to that young African-American girl entering the school? What would you say to any child that has to enter that school? So to conclude very quickly, what do we want? Change the name of the Edward Devotion School to one befitting the town's values. Do so in a timely and inclusive manner, and lead by example. So I thank you.[695.35][695.35](Applause)
Thank you, Ms. Jaws Wiki.
I'm Joyce Jaws Wiki, Town Meeting member from Precinct Nine. I'm a former devotion and BHS parent from 1969 to 1995. I'm a former school committee member. I'm a former devotion PTO president and a classroom volunteer. This is a hard act to follow. I have received dozens of emails and Twitter things from...tweets, thank you, from hundreds of devotion alumni who felt that they learned a very good lesson by going to the Edward Devotion School. They were told that he owned a slave, and they were told that at the time, he was an honorable member of his society. But now, it's abhorrent to us. It's a blot on our history. But changing the name of Devotion School isn't going to address the problems we still have with racism and diversity. It's not going to change it. To me, it seems like an empty gesture. By teaching our children that what was right then is unacceptable now, and that's how our culture, our country, our society has grown and made efforts to become better. I did some research on Wikipedia and HiddenBrookline.com, and these are the names of slave owners who have been honored in Brookline. Washington, Jefferson, Taylor, Pierce, who was so vociferously pro-slavery for men to own slaves, but not women. I couldn't find out whether Pierce School was named for him. Thomas Perkins, four members of the Winchester family...I live on Winchester Street. Three members of the White family, Deacon Ebenezer Davis, Obadiah Druce, John Heath, and four other family members. Heath was named for the street, which was named for a slave owner. Thomas and Dr. William Aspenwall, Zebadiah Boylston Esquire, Timothy Corey, Elisha Isaac, and Benjamin Gardner, Henry and Samuel Sewell, and Edward Devotion had streets and schools named for them. Forty-one of the 56 signers of the Declaration of Independence owned slaves. Are we going to erase the honors we have given to people who have done good but were flawed, but weren't considered flawed in their times? This is a teaching opportunity. We should be putting our efforts into erasing the divisiveness and the racism that is going on today, and this is an example of how we can do it. When I talked about the streets being honored, people have said, oh, the chaos that would have caused to start changing the name of all the streets. Well, if we really want to get rid of these honors, then we stand up and we do it all. And if we're not going to do it all, if we're not going to face the chaos and inconvenience of naming...renaming streets, then let's use these people as teaching moments to make our society better, more inclusive, less racist, less bigoted. Let's do that. I vote no action.
Thank you, Ms. Titkoff.
Susan Wolf Titkoff for the school committee. Tonight, we have an opportunity, not just to talk about history, but also to be part of history. The comments we make at these microphones will be studied by future generations of scholars interested in how we, in our day, chose to tackle the difficult legacy of slavery in Brookline. This chapter in our history begins with the work of Hidden Brookline, the Brookline Historical Society, our dedicated petitioners, Deborah Brown and Ann Greenwald. They embody the famous challenge attributed to John Mater and Keynes. Quote, "When information changes, I alter my conclusions." What, sir, do you do? As the history of slavery in Brookline has come into focus, the school committee has considered three aspects of renaming: the process, the criteria, and the merits. First, process. Grappling seriously with our history is broader than any one individual and any one building. Therefore, the school committee's first step was to set up an ad hoc task force with careful thought about a diverse group of membership with folks like Dr. Barbara Brown, Misty Jeans, Malcolm Cawthorn, Mark Gray, Ken List, John Dempsey, and many others, to investigate the names of all of our school spaces, not just devotion. And while the task force has voted to support this warrant article, they continue to investigate all school names. Financially, the school committee also realized early on that tens of thousands of dollars were about to be spent on new Edward Devotion signage, on the basketball court, the soccer field, and elsewhere. So we planned ahead and requested that those signs be put on hold for the moment. As a result, there will be no big-ticket cost items that will need reversing if this warrant article is successful. At that point, the public hearings began. All in, this issue has been discussed at more than 15 public hearings...public meetings with input from roughly 100 students, alumni, parents, teachers, residents, historians, both expert and armchair, and others. Second, criteria. We've been guided by the naming committee, both of Town Meeting and the school committee. The bar was not and is not a perfect honoree. We looked for balance. We sought out and discussed evidence about whether the contributions of Edward Devotion net-net outweighed the fact that he held a fellow human being in slavery. We also weighed the historical context in which he lived. The school committee asserts that naming a school merits a higher standard than naming other public spaces, a street, for example, and here's why. Adults can freely choose to live on a street or not, but we require our children to attend school. We ask them to assume into their very own identity the namesake of the building that they inhabit. We ask a five-year-old child to say, I am a proud student of the Edward Devotion School. We ask them to root for a devotion on the soccer field and shout "Devo Pride" at Math League tournaments. This isn't just about a school's name. We are talking about the core of a child's identity, white children and children of color. So a higher standard is needed. Finally, to the merits. The school committee believes that, knowing what we know now, we have a singular opportunity to make a decision on whether this individual, Edward Devotion, continues to be worthy of our town's highest honor, having his name on one of our schools. Edward Devotion was surely a wealthy man, responsible for donating land for educational purposes. And while we acknowledge that this was admirable, we also acknowledge that the wealth was derived, at least in part, from his holding another person in slavery. The school committee also believes that while this warrant article is an important step, it is just one part of a broader approach to combating racism. To that end, let me share a few highlights from how we're thinking about slavery and diversity. In terms of slavery, every year from grades three through eight, it is taught in the curriculum. Just a couple examples. In third grade, we teach about slavery, emancipation, and abolition here in Brookline. In the middle grades, we talk about the impact of slavery on early American history, the slave trade, the three-fifths, the Constitutional Convention debate, and others. And this culminates in our study of the Civil War, Reconstruction, and the Civil Rights Movement. We are proud that this multi-year curriculum, scope and sequence, is an integral part of our K-8 social studies in Brookline, led by our talented educators, and in partnership with outside organizations like Hidden Brookline, Facing History in Ourselves, and others. In parallel, I'm also proud that racial diversity among our educational leaders is at an all-time high. In K-8 alone, we have three principals of color and four vice-principals of color. This is historic. And in the over eye the school committee advocated for and the town generously supported, new funds dedicated to racial equity work. No single action will end racism in our town or our country. And regardless of this vote, as was noted, Edward Devotion's name will not be erased from history. It will live on the house in front of the school and on artifacts throughout the building. But this warrant article is one very important step. It is not only symbolic. It is real in dismantling the structural barriers to racial equity in our town that our students face and that our educators are part of, and we are happy to answer questions that you may have about our ongoing plans to ensure a robust renaming process this fall with our students, residents, and families. If you'll permit me to conclude on a personal note, there are some very uncomfortable aspects of what it means to confront a change like this. I was trained 20 years ago as an anthropological linguist, and 20 years later, my university is going through a very public...has just gone through a very public renaming process with one of its colleges. My former colleagues were asked to weigh in as anthropological...as anthropologists, as ethnographers, and as linguists. Their professional conclusion: Names and words shape our thoughts, just as much as thought shape our words. Names matter especially in shaping our children's minds. Like many of you, I've had to learn things...unlearn things that I learned as a child. For example, the myth of assimilation, the melting pot, has masked very important truths about how we all got to America and how different groups have experienced the American dream. In the interest of being a good American, I've had to unlearn many things, many false narratives, and it's been a humbling, important process for me. It's also been a necessary one, and it's one that we are now experiencing here together tonight. On behalf of the school committee, thank you for your attention to this very important matter, and we urge your support for warrant Article 23.[1387.11][1387.11](Applause)
Thank you, Mr. Margolis.
Mr. Moderator, being confident that everything there is to be said on this motion will be said, I will contribute my time to the meeting.
All right, Mr. Selwyn.
Thank you. Lisa Selwyn, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13, member of the advisory committee, but I'm speaking for myself. I am concerned that we are proposing to essentially eradicate Edward Devotion from this building with an inadequate amount of research and certainly with an inadequate understanding of his contribution. So I did a little research myself. There were two extensive 10-page reports prepared and available on the Brookline Historical Society website, both of which were written at approximately the beginning of the 20th century. Edward Devotion was active in town government. He was one of the signers of petition to create Muddy River as a separate town, and he bequeathed a sum of money to the town...not land, by the way, to the town in his will. Died in 1744, and in approximately 1763, Town Meeting voted to pursue the construction of a school, as he had directed, in the center of town. However, the school was not built at that time, and when the revolution came, his contribution was loaned to the Commonwealth and was repaid at highly depreciated dollars. In a 1898 paper that was prepared and is available on the Historical Society website, it was estimated that had his contribution been allowed to compound at a then-typical interest rate of 5%, it would have been worth $2.5 million at that time. If we extrapolate that to the present time, that contribution would be sufficient not only to pay for the entire reconstruction of the Devotion School, probably the high school as well, as well as any new signage. Edward Devotion was a strong supporter of public education in Brookline and put his money where his mouth was. 150 years went by between the time that he made his bequest and the time that the town actually constructed the Devotion School. And yet, the town determined after 150 years that he was still deserving of having his name associated with that building. There were some suggestions by the petitioner as to the fact that he was nothing special. Well, I don't think that that's fair, and I don't think that it's appropriate for the petitioner or anyone else to make judgments when the town of Brookline saw fit to maintain his legacy for such an extended period of time. As was pointed out, we have many streets that are named for slave owners. By the way, I have not been able to independently corroborate the fact that Edward Devotion...the specific Edward Devotion for whom the building is named was in fact a slave owner. There was nothing in either of the Historical Society papers that suggested that. We're being asked to accept the petitioner's say-so with very little corroborative research, but granted that, it seems to me that this is a proposal that basically is using Devotion as low-hanging fruit. We don't want to change names of streets, too complicated.
One minute.
People have to change all their stationery. But this one's an easy one. We can change the name of the school and make it...and feel good about it. I think that this deserves a lot more study. I'm certainly going to vote no action, but assuming, based on the applause recently here, assuming this passes, I would certainly hope that the naming committee will give Edward Devotion a fair shot at its process and consider maintaining the Devotion name, assuming that you vote to adopt this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heller.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nancy Heller for unanimous select board. Tonight, we voted on the Spiegel Amendment. The petitioners, the school committee, and others have told you much about the reasons for supporting this warrant article. The select board agrees that it's worthy of consideration. As the select board member who probably has the closest connection to Devotion, I was a parent at Devotion from 1979 to 1999. I was very involved in the PTO, chair of the PTO for a few years, chair of Extended Day for quite a number of years...Devotion Extended Day for quite a number of years. And when I first heard about this, I thought, ugh, my goodness, they're going to change that? That's going to rip out my history, history of my...where my children went to school and what happened to them. But as I thought about it more, I realized that really it's more like changing a symbol. In the South where I grew up, there were many, many Confederate flags. There are many left... There are many less now because people have recognized that the stain and the horror of slavery should not be honored in that way. In the North, we don't have those Confederate flags, or at least most of us don't. But we do have considerable amount of slave owners, people who were revered in their time and who did good things. There's no question that Edward Devotion did good things. But being a slave owner is a stain, and it's a stain on us that we need to think about and consider how we're going to erase that kind of stain. So we need to examine our history for the admiration of those who supported slavery. And the renaming process is really the first step in that journey, I'll call it. Now, I don't think we should exclude the idea of naming the school for its geographic location. The beauty of that is that you never get into a problem later, or hopefully not, of does, is the person that you've selected, the name of the person that you select for the school in the future, if we decide to do that, and then we find out that that person has significant flaws, like Edward Devotion, and we're going to rename it again. With a geographic location, we don't have that problem. So I would urge you to consider these things. Please vote favorable action on this warrant article. Thank you.
I suppose one might argue that Calvin Coolidge had a few deficiencies.
Christine Westfall. I'm a resident of Heard Road. I'm on the Advisory Committee, but tonight I'm speaking for myself. I'm speaking against the motion for a number of reasons. And a lot of them you've heard already and you'll hear, and I have a real sense that this is one of those losing battles, but I'm going to go for it anyway. If we're being realistic, we all look back on things in our lives that we regret, and we hope that those are not the things that will define us forever. And that is a message that I feel we need to convey to our children, along with other messages. I don't believe that Edward Devotion looked back on the ownership of a slave with regret at the time that he lived, although I think if he could look back with 2018 eyes, he certainly would. And so just on that basis, I'm uncomfortable with changing the name. I am also uncomfortable with changing the name because I believe that there is some value to understanding where we have come from and conveying that to our children. And an earlier speaker spoke of the fact that you can talk about Edward Devotion and his positive contributions and his flaws and understand where we have come from. I think that it's entirely possible that the people who named the school after him in the first place understood that he owned a slave, because at least when I was looking at the Hidden Brookline site, it appeared that that was one of the pieces of property, as abhorrent as that is, that were listed in his estate. But this is a difficult issue, and we're not good at history in the United States. I don't think it's a surprise to anybody who's looked at it that he owned a slave. The reality is, virtually every white male in New England in the 1600s, 1700s, and 1800s benefited from slavery. The scholarship on that now, the historical scholarship on that now, is very expanding and complete. It wasn't just the slave owners, it was the banks, it was the insurance companies, it was the shipbuilders, it was the shippers, it was all of us. And it still is. This motion doesn't do anything to change present inequality. We're all concerned with the growing gap in the United States, with the growing inequality. And there's now substantial discussion about the fact that it's not the 1% that causes that inequality, but the top 10%. Or to put it another way, as the cartoonist once observed, "We have met the enemy, and he is us." And this doesn't do anything to address that. We'll spend a lot of energy over the next couple of years playing with names, and I think that energy is better spent thinking about what we can do for equality and equity now. And so I would ask you to oppose the motion. I think that we can take pride in where we have come from. I think that we need to convey to our children that we are on a hill and we have not reached the top of that hill, and we have a long way to go. I think those are important lessons, and we need to do that. I don't think we need to change the name of the school to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sandman. And Stanley Zoll, if you're in the auditorium, would you come forward and sit in the front row, please? And Mr. Fernandez, please come forward.
Mike Sandman, speaking for the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee voted 18 to 0 with two abstentions to recommend favorable action on Article 23, the version of which has been submitted to you tonight, to rename the Edward Devotion School. Walt Kelly, the cartoonist who produced Pogo, has been quoted tonight. I'm going to quote Shakespeare, who said, "The evil that men do lives after them; the good is often turd with their bones. The good Devotion did lived after him, and the evil wasn't disinterred and expanded, and examined, rather, until the Hidden Brookline Project quite recently." Devotion left his estate in the town in 1744 to be used for public education. In 1892, 148 years later, his name was selected for a new school. Apparently, we're not the only ones who take a long time deciding where to build the school. The Advisory Committee heard broad support for Article 23, along with some objections. Opponents said that the article was an attempt to change history by applying today's standards to the 18th century. A Yale University committee recommended in 2016 that Yale ask itself whether the principal legacy of a building's namesake was, quote, "significantly contested in the time and place in which the namesake lived," unquote. Thus, King Solomon's having had multiple wives would not have meant that King Solomon Hall should be renamed. But was slavery the accepted standard in Devotion's day, or was it significantly contested? Slavery was not rare in 18th-century Massachusetts, and it was a contested issue. Judge Samuel Sewell wrote an abolitionist pamphlet in 1700. Some of his relatives were slaveholders. Slavery became illegal in Massachusetts in 1781. A Worcester jury freed Quack Walker from slavery after hearing Judge William Cushing's instructions, quote, "As to the doctrine of slavery and the right of Christians to hold Africans in perpetual servitude and sell and treat them as we do our horses and cattle, a different idea has taken place with the people of America. Our state constitution sets out with declaring that all men are born free and equal, and in short, is totally repugnant to the idea of being born slaves." Quack Walker was released from custody and awarded 50 pounds, and the decision was upheld by the Massachusetts Supreme Court, and slavery ceased to be legal in the state in 1781. Using the Yale criterion as a starting point, we might also ask whether slaveholding was significantly contested in the time and place in which the namesake was honored, that is, in 1892, 33 years after the end of the Civil War. Many of the town's leaders must have been Civil War veterans. Certainly, slavery had been significantly contested in the time and place in which they lived. It seems unlikely that they would have chosen that name had they known that Devotion was a slaveholder, not when the names of their fallen comrades were etched on the town's Civil War memorial. A second objection is that renaming the school takes something from those who attended Devotion. I graduated in 1961 from Classical High School in Worcester, which closed in 1966. At our 50th reunion, our school was just a memory, but we still had a hell of a good time. Changing the name doesn't diminish those of you who attended Devotion School. At your 50th, you can gather in the name of the Devotion class of whatever year. That was the school's name when you attended, and you too can have a hell of a good time. But a school is a special place where children spend a large part of their waking lives. If the name isn't changed, how will present and future students feel about going to a school named for someone we now know to have been a slaveholder? We can't unknow this. Slavery was legal in 18th-century Massachusetts, but even in 1700, it was not universally accepted. It was contested, and by 1781, it was illegal. By the time the school was named in 1892, slavery had been rejected by force of arms by the people for whom the Civil War was a living memory. Changing the name of Devotion School does not misapply today's standards to the legacy of Edward Devotion. It applies generation-old standards, even as we recognize that those standards have often been contested or merely observed in the breach. That does not exempt us from applying them today. The Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on Article 23.
The next speaker on my list is Stanley Zoll, a longtime Brookline resident and a former town meeting member. And for those of you with extremely long memories, you will remember, as I certainly do, that the first townwide election that I ran in was not when I whooped Jeffrey Allen in 1994, it was when I got whooped by Stanley Zoll for the Brookline Redevelopment Authority and the dim past. Mr. Zoll, however, is not a current resident of Brookline, and if there are 15 town meeting members who object to his addressing the body, please stand, and there are none, Mr. Zoll.
Good evening. How's that better? My name is Jerry Sawyer. I live in Sudbury. I had the great privilege of growing up--
Well, I, excuse me, sir, I take it all back. I called Stanley Zoll forward. Is he in the auditorium?
I apologize.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Sawyer, you'll have to wait your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for your kind word. I don't think I could duplicate that electoral fee considering your accomplishments.
Your name and address, Mr. Zoll.
Stanley Zoll, resident, 167 Cross Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts. I graduated from the Devotion School over 60 years ago and was active in Brookline civic life for a number of years following graduation from college, including service for the town meeting, member Council of the County Council, Cable TV Licensing Committee, and the Redevelopment Authority. I shall own the house. I grew up in Winchester Street, and my son lives there now. I would also add that relative to the contents of this article that in my current community, I have served on the Board of Assessors and was the mentor for two African-American females, the first ones to serve on that board, and was the campaign chairman for the first African-American woman to serve on the school committee there. Unfortunately, but possibly impractical to get a comprehensive survey of school alumni, but I still have some questions here. Was similar research done concerning the people for which the other elementary schools were named to determine if they had controversial backgrounds? Since the part of the old building being preserved is to honor John F. Kennedy, should the school be named for him? If we want to honor a well-known deceased African-American pioneer of Massachusetts, we could name the school after the late Senator Edward Brooke. If we change the school name, should we give recognition to the land benefactor by naming the gymnasium or some other part of the school for him? I would assume that his house, Edward Devotion House, sitting in front of the school, would be allowed to stay. The ownership of slaves was not considered illegal at that time. I'm not sure that he was ostracized for doing so. In what way should President Thomas Jefferson or other respected leaders in this country be penalized for owning a slave or slaves well before the advent of the Civil War? I would say that even Mr. Spiegel's amendment might be feasible alternative. Please be careful in consideration of the delicate matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Zoll. Mr. Fernandez and Jane Bradley, would you come forward and sit in the front row, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Raul Fernandez, town meeting member, Precinct 9. I rise to speak in favor of warrant article 23 and to share some historical and sociological context that may convince my fellow town meeting members to favor this change. I'm a faculty member at Boston University School of Education, where my teaching and research are focused on equity, diversity, and inclusion in education. My most popular course is about justice in education, and that's what I want to talk about today, what is just. It's important to start with a simple fact. In our society, names matter. They matter to us as individuals. For instance, how others pronounce our names is important to many of us. They matter to us as families, and that our family names often carry great historical significance. And names matter to us as communities. The naming of towns, streets, and, yes, schools predates the colonization of the Americas. For us, the naming of public buildings and memorials is an honorific. It's a kind of monument. And the naming of schools like monuments are markers in time, etched in the present to tell future generations what we value and perhaps what they should value too. But we have to recognize that just because a name was etched on a building by those with the privilege and power to do so, that we are not bound to honor it for all of eternity. In this nation, long ruled by a white patriarchy, historians have uplifted slaveholders because of their notable contributions while glossing over their dreadful pasts and worse, ignoring the contribution of women, blacks, and other marginalized groups. Take, for example, a new project of the New York Times which seeks to provide obituaries for those who were overlooked during their time. One such person was Ida B. Wells, a nationally-known journalist who campaigned against lynching and whose life, according to the editors of the Times, did not warrant an obituary. We also know from the extensive research of Dr. Derek Alderman that there are more than 900 American streets named after Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. We also know through his research in our own eyes that these streets appear almost exclusively in black communities. For all of our quoting and celebrating of Dr. King, predominantly white, relatively wealthy, and allegedly progressive communities like ours have not seen fit to put his name on our public buildings, streets, or schools. But let's get back to warrant article 23. A resident of my precinct reached out to voice her opposition to the change proposed in the article. She and her sisters attended the Devotion School and naturally have some affinity for the name, if not for its namesake. But in one of her letters, she added a missive about slavery that struck me. She said, quote, "Yes, it was terrible and not right, but there is no one living that was a victim of it," end quote. Respectfully, she could not be more wrong. 3,950,528, that's how many people were enslaved as of the 1860 census, the last taken before the end of the Civil War and the passage of the 13th Amendment. Those millions of people, the millions who came before them, and their millions of descendants suffered bravely, not just through slavery, but also through a failed Reconstruction effort, Jim Crow segregation, lynching, medical experimentation, work and housing discrimination, vigilante and police shootings, and the list goes on. An unbroken line of oppression that can be traced directly back to the original sin of slavery. Now, this warrant article won't solve any of that, but it will bring us one step closer to justice. It will put an end to our complicity in honoring a man that took ill-gotten gains as a result of the unpaid labor of another person whose freedom he stole and then bequeathed it along with that person to our town. When we talk about reconsidering the contributions of slaveholders, we have to consider that all or a part of what they contributed came directly as a result of enslaving people, which for them was equal to both free money and time. Time to raise a family, to build a business, to start a revolution, all on the backs of lives stolen from others. Let's be honest here, Edward Devotion made no extraordinary contribution to this town. Edward Devotion made no extraordinary contribution to this town. Yes, he was an active member of the town, but that's not why the school was named after him. It was, as far as we know, because of his financial gift. And it's undeniable that that gift was made possible, at least in part, because he enslaved someone and forced that person to work on his behalf, giving him unearned time and money. And therefore, the gift itself is tainted by the stain of slavery in a way that should make it unacceptable to us.
One minute.
Some have said that Edward Devotion was no different than others of his time, but we know through extensive historical research that there were many opposed even then to human ownership and trade, most notably the people themselves who were enslaved. He was a man of his time is a tired and long debunked argument. Others have said that this article is an easy out for the town, that it will make us look more progressive than we are. We all know that a favorable vote today will not put an end to issues of systemic racism in this town, but this Warren article doesn't seek to solve all of our problems. It seeks to address just one. If you think this article doesn't go far enough, then do what these petitioners have done and draft another Warren article that builds upon this one. Show up to committee meetings, or better yet, join those committees and have your voices heard. Tell them that you want, as I do, not just the name change, but a plaque and a corresponding education program that tells students, teachers, families, and administrators exactly why we made this change. Speak publicly on these issues and hold our elected, appointed, and paid officials accountable for addressing racism in our town. Do all of that, but also vote favorably on the Warren article before us. These petitioners have given us a vehicle--
Please conclude.
Yep. These petitioners have given us a vehicle for our generation to say no to the injustices of the past and yes to a more inclusive future. Yes to a school with a name that our kids can be proud of. Let's put a long overdue end to our town's complicity in this matter and vote yes on Warren Article 23. Thank you.
Ms. Bradley and Ida Goldstein and your mother, would you please come forward and sit in the front row? Please come to the-- Ms. Bradley, come to the microphone. You're on.
Hello, my name is Jane Bradley, and I'm-- I'm here to speak more emotionally about--
I'm sorry, I have to introduce you. I lost track of things here. Ms. Bradley has lived the 31 years of her life in the town of Brookline, went to the Devotion School. She is no longer a Brookline resident, and if there are 15 town meeting members who object to her speaking, she will not be able to speak. So if you object, please stand. Seeing no one standing, go ahead, Ms. Bradley.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Jane Bradley. I live in Westwood, Massachusetts. Now, for the first 31 years of my life, I was a Brookline resident. For the first 25 years of my life, my family lived on Egmont Street. I'm one of five, and all five of us attended the Edward Devotion School from kindergarten through grade nine. And I know I'm coming in late in the game, but this is an emotional issue for me, and I've listened to all the dates, so I don't think I need to go through that again. But I just think, and I want to express myself, that I think we're heading down a very dangerous, slippery slope where if we allow certain things to happen, it's going to snowball. And it's not just about racism. It could be about religious freedoms, ethnicity, sexual orientation, and I just feel that this is-- this, you know, it's Edward Devotion now, it's Washington Street next, and where and when will this end? And I personally am so proud to be an Edward Devotion graduate. I remember as a student, I passed that sign in front of Edward Devotion that said that he was a slave owner. And I remember thinking about that and thinking about how many hundreds of years ago that was. And that was what was acceptable then, but it's unacceptable now. And I feel that, you know, it's more than-- Edward Devotion, that school stands for something. It stands for excellence in teaching and excellent education. I have lifelong friends from the Edward Devotion School, and I don't want to see this school's name changed. And as my daughter and I were watching the Division One Men's Lacrosse Championship at Gillette, my daughter Jamie happened to be looking up Yale University, and she's-- because my family has heard me ad nauseam about what I think about this. And Jamie pointed out that Yale University was named after Eli Yale, who was not just a businessman, but he was a slave trader. So, you know, where do we go from there? Do people go into the Board of Trustees of Yale and say, "We need to change the name of this very important institution?" And I hear you, Ms. Brown, I do. But I think the part of education is not just the teachers, but the parents, educating our children about what is our history. We can't change the history. We can only ensure that it doesn't happen again. And I just really am concerned that this isn't the end of it.
One minute.
And that if this passes, it's going to-- other things will continue throughout this town that you're going to be facing, you know, in every single meeting about something that somebody's not happy about. And so that's why I came here. I have no vote, but I am asking for the opposition to the Edward Devotion School name change. I just feel like it's-- at the very least, needs more time and should be more, I think, well thought out. So that's what I would like to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ida Goldstein, a Devotion student.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Ida Goldstein. I live at 24 Stemmon Street, right across the street from the Devotion School. I am a third grader at Devotion, and my grandfather also went to Devotion in the 1950s. When I was told that Edward Devotion owned a slave, I was surprised. I did not know he owned a slave. At Devotion, I learned that slaves were kidnapped from their home, had no freedom, and were treated badly by their white owners. I learned about Rosa Parks, who didn't give up her seat to a white person and went to jail. I learned about Martin Luther King Jr.'s "I Have a Dream" speech. We learned that black people must be treated equally. Slavery and racism are not the right thing, and our school should not be named after someone who did not do the right thing. Even though I know all of this, it's a lot of change, and we've had a lot of change already. I moved out of the old school, and I've watched the school be torn down and built back up. I've been at Lower Devoe on Webster Street for the past years, where we don't have a playground or cafeteria, and we have to share a really, really, really small gym. In September, there will be more change. I'll need to learn a whole new school building, where classrooms are, where lockers will be, and where to find bathrooms. I'll be in a new grade with new teachers and new schedules. Close to 1,000 students will all be together in the same building trying to find their way. That's a lot to get used to, and having a new name can make it feel like too much change all at once. My friends and I like the name Devotion because it's something we know. But I also can feel excited about the new name if he or she is someone I can be proud of. I ask for three things. One, give us students a chance to talk about our feelings around the name change. We may feel excited, happy, sad, angry, or stressed about the change. Help us manage our feelings. Two, teach us more about Edward Devotion, slavery, and racism, and why taking his name off our school is now important. Three, give us students a humongous saying what the new name will be. I don't want random grownups coming into our classroom and announcing, "Hello, students. Your school is now named the Swedish Chef School. Let us offer names and vote on a new name. Thank you for giving students a chance to stand up for what's right and be part of our school's change.
I have to say that Ida Goldstein is the youngest Brookline resident to address town meeting in the almost 50 years during which I've been associated with it, and certainly certainly was a proud representative for classmates. Mr. Sawyer, I don't have your biographical information, but Mr. Sawyer is also a non-resident. And if there are 15 town meeting members that object to his speaking, please stand. Nobody's standing. Go ahead, Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jerry Sawyer. I live in Sudbury. I had the great privilege of growing up in Brookline and graduating from the Edward Devotion School over 60 years ago. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in opposition to the removal of the name Edward Devotion from the school that sits on the very property that bequeathed to the town. I apologize if my remarks duplicate those of previous speakers. I understand that there are those who believe that the association with slavery should not be memorialized and who feel to do so sends a bad message to our children. If I lived in that period, I believe I would have been an abolitionist and taken the side of people like Benjamin Franklin and John Adams and Alexander Hamilton. But I disagree that others should be singularly eradicated from slavery, from those who owned a slave. Now, it's true that Edward Devotion owned one slave. By all known accounts, he was an otherwise honest and dedicated patriot who lived in Brookline. He was not very wealthy. He had the vision to-- he owned property, but he was not very wealthy other than that. He had the vision to recognize the need for a school in his town during a period most of us cannot even imagine. Edward Devotion, through his will, bequeathed the remains of his estate to the town of Brookline to build a school that he envisioned a property he owned in the center of town. There's now a petition before you that presumes to suggest that owning-- that the owning of even one slave, despite Mr. Devotion's good standing and benevolence, we should eradicate his memory from the history and deprive our children and grandchildren the true history of the 18th century before and after the Revolution. If we continue on this endeavor locally and nationally, where will this end? In 1641, our first governor of Massachusetts Bay Colony, John Winthrop, he was a slave owner. He himself was a slave owner, and he helped write the first law legalizing slavery in North America. Innumerable patriots and leaders not only owned slaves, but dealt in them as well. So perhaps we should eradicate the names of some of our forefathers by removing their images from our currency. We could start with our first president, George Washington, who owned over 300 slaves. Or Thomas Jefferson, who owned more than 600 and even fathered several children with one. Let's not forget to remove the picture of Andrew Jackson from our $20 bill. His many slaves was the source of his wealth. Or Ulysses Grant, a hero of the Civil War and a slave owner. There are a total of 18 presidents whose pictures adorned the walls of some of our oldest and historic buildings and monuments who were slave owners. Perhaps we should consider renaming, as some have suggested, some of the streets of Brookline, like Washington Street, or Boylston Street, Sewell Ave., Gardner Road, Winthrop Road, Cabot, or Winchester Street, whose names are all synonymous with slave owners since the mid-1600s. I could go on and on, but where do we draw the line? How do we determine--
Draw it at five minutes, sir. You have another minute.
How do we determine that a one slave owner should be singled out for removal of his name from our visible history, but those who owned more than one slave, because of their status as war heroes, which they were, or other slave owners who gave so much of themselves to our democracy, that despite owning multiple slaves, they should remain highly visible? I do not, in fact, support removing the names of patriots from history, and I do not believe that changing the name of Edward Devotion School sends a bad message to our children. What sends a bad message is the imagined need to deprive them of the right to learn our history while telling them some of our forefathers were good slave owners and some were bad. There is not a lot known about Edward Devotion, but his historians have noted he was a good man, decent man, whom we all know-- who all came to know because of his desire to improve your town, knowing he would never be able to witness the fruits of his goodwill and philanthropy. More importantly, it's fair to assume that this school would not have existed were it not for his vision.
Please conclude, sir.
We have a proud history. We should embrace it, not change it, or pretend it doesn't exist. Thank you.
Well, the question's been called. I'll accept that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have the following people signed up to speak in favor of the motion before you: Ms. McClelland, Ms. Stone, Ms. Kaplan, Ms-- who are town meeting members, Ms. Greenwald in the front row, who is a co-petitioner, Ms. Nabel, Ms. Cates, Mr. Miller, Ms. Fraley, all town meeting members, and the following non-town meeting members, Bill Schechter, John Mandy, Barbara Brown, and Annika Seren. I have no one remaining on the list to speak against the motion. My sense is that further speeches are not going to change any minds in this auditorium, and so I'll allow the motion. Requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting to close off debate. Those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed, that motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the motion, on the gray supplement number--
Could we get a recorded vote, please?
There are 35 members who want a recorded vote, and of course there are. We will have one. Now, ladies and gentlemen, this is Article 23, main motion. First thing I suggest you do is to press the button in the lower right-hand corner of your handheld device, which will-- the power button, which will turn it back on if it's gone off, as it's supposed to after 10 minutes. We've been at this for an hour and 10 minutes. And when you vote, remember that 1 means yes, 2 means no, 3 means is an abstention. On your screen, it will say "Accepted" or words to that effect, and it will give the vote that you cast, and that means that your vote has been recorded. So we can-- whenever you're ready to start.
What's that?
Yes means what, no means what, sir?
A yes vote is in favor of the motion-- main motion before you, essentially, effectively to change the name of the school. A no vote is a vote against that motion, and an abstention is something that town clerk and I do. Are you clear about that, sir? Yes or no? We're-- I'm going to run the timer again because I was chatting while-- We're, I'm going to run the timer again, because I was chatting while the voting period was in process. So, can we run that again? Okay. I beg your pardon, ladies and gentlemen, I didn't realize that the timer had started. Okay, please cast your votes. One, in favor of the motion, two, against, three, abstention. Motion carries by a vote of a hundred and seventy-one in favor, nineteen opposed, and And my compliments to the speakers, that was a good debate. We turn now, we've dealt with Articles twenty-four and twenty-five, we turn now to Article twenty-six. The motion under Article twenty-six is on page twenty-six dash two. It's a motion to refer the subject matter of this article to a committee, to a moderator's committee. It's moved by Mr. Goldstein. And is there a second?
Second.
There is a second?
Second.
I call on Yolanda Rodriguez, a petitioner. And Mr. Nero, would you come forward? Go ahead. You're on.
Thank you. Okay. Hello, I'm Yolanda Rodriguez, Rhoda Goodwin, and I have a-
Speak into the microphone, if you would.
Can you hear me now?
No.
No? Okay, it's right here. I've always been told I had a really loud voice, so let me know if it's too loud. My friend Rhoda Goodwin and I have proposed a motion, Article twenty-six, and what we are doing tonight is asking that, for your vote, to move it, to refer the article to a moderator's committee for further study. This proposal has evolved since last year, when we first proposed something similar to the Select Board's Committee on Senior Tax Relief. It has evolved and had many changes since, but the focus of this article has remained the same. The focus of this article is to look at a group of people who do not meet the means-tested programs that you offer now for tax relief for seniors. If you have fifty-seven thousand one dollars, maybe, you don't qualify for many of the programs offered. But between that and some of the median incomes in this town, there's a gap. Brookline is one of the wealthiest municipalities in Massachusetts, has the highest median, families with dependent children have the highest median income in Brookline at a hundred forty-four thousand nine hundred, and Brookline families with dependent children have a median income of a hundred ninety-seven thousand six hundred dollars. And by contrast, the median income among Brookline senior women living alone is thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Brookline, Brookline has a taxable value, has assessed taxable value of twenty-three billion dollars, it's the fourth highest in the state. Norfolk County has the second greatest concentration of elder economic insecurity in Massachusetts, and there's a problem in Brookline for a gap, this gap of people, these senior citizens who don't qualify for the programs, but have difficulty with paying taxes and everything else. What we have, what we proposed was that Brookline residents who were seventy years of age or older, that was a change, and whose income was less than or equal to the senior circuit breaker cap, that if their income was in that gap, where they are not getting any kind of help if, for the services that they may need to stay in their homes, they are, that they would pay their property taxes, continue to pay property taxes, continue to pay the yearly two-and-a-half increase in property taxes, but that on future overrides and debt exclusions, just that amount of future debt exclusions and overrides, that they be exempted from that amount. It would still affect the base of their property taxes, that would probably keep going up, but that exemption could make a difference to someone on a fixed income who, with Article twenty-five, might qualify for some help to stay as they are currently, but without that help, would be facing a lot of insecurity, a lot of fear as the overrides come, and being worried that they would be unable to stay in their homes. Brookline has a problem with senior housing. There are a lot of stories and a lot of articles coming in to say we need more senior housing.
You have one minute.
Help them keep, stay in their homes and age in place. Anyway, what we want is, if not this proposal, some proposal, we need to have a conversation that talks about the people who need help in this town to stay here, to give us the diversity we've had, the economic diversity that's always helped our town to be strong. If we can just get the conversation going, if a moderator's committee, a citizens committee can come together and talk about this, and try and find ways that we can help this population, I just ask you to please refer this to a moderator's committee, so that we can have that opportunity for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Oh, I hope I never have to do this again.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Neil Gordon, town meeting member from Precinct One, speaking for the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee is sympathetic to the idea of offering additional tax relief to Brookline seniors. We appreciate the petitioners' efforts in bringing their warrant article, and for reminding us that some Brookline residents are especially burdened by overrides and debt exclusions. That said, it's not clear to the Advisory Committee that a moderator's committee, charged with studying senior tax relief, would add to our overall body of knowledge on that subject. Better perhaps would be to include the impact of tax increases on seniors in the charge of a long-range financial review committee as part of an overall analysis of the town's long-term budget outlook. A bit of background. A year ago, town meeting passed a resolution calling for a committee to study specifically senior real estate tax relief. That committee, headed by Select Board Member Franco, met eight times, received public comment, including from the petitioners, considered a number of potential measures to provide tax relief to Brookline seniors, and issued a comprehensive report that included seven recommendations. Based on these recommendations, Fall 2017 Town Meeting voted favorably on three warrant articles. The first reduced the interest rate for seniors participating in tax deferral program. The second, a home rule petition, asked the state legislature to allow an increase in the income cap for participation in the tax deferral program. The third creates a fund to help low-income seniors and people with disabilities who are struggling to pay their taxes. Last Thursday, we passed the fourth warrant article to provide equitable tax relief to those denied a state senior circuit breaker tax credit by the use of statewide averages not particularly relevant to Brookline. Further, the town assessor is committed to better publicizing the existing tax relief programs, and the town is working towards expanding and improving other programs, such as the senior tax work-off program. The Advisory Committee concluded that with two home rule petitions and a new program pending, it's prudent to wait and learn, both from the legislative process and from the implementation and expansion of programs, before initiating a process that no doubt would replicate much of the work done by the committee headed by Mr. Franco. Further, the Advisory Committee recognizes that any new committee would face the same frustration as the prior committee, of not being able to analyze residents' income as compared to property values, and more broadly residents' net worth, because the data is simply not available. By a vote of eleven in favor, five opposed, and five abstaining, the Advisory Committee recommends no action on the petitioner's referral motion under Article twenty-six.
Mr. Clathorne, is it?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Robert Leppson, town meeting member from Precinct Nine. I'm pleased to speak on behalf of the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, who unambiguously supports Article twenty-six, by unanimous vote of eight to zero. At this point, I want everyone to take a moment to think back to this past Thursday, to the vote we took just before adjournment. As you may recall, we completed our last session with an overwhelming yes vote for Susan Granoff's Article twenty-five. This vote demonstrated town meeting's broad-based support to help provide much-needed property tax release, relief for Brookline's low-income seniors, many of whom have been longtime residents of this town. In fact, it is clear that many of these folks have been paying property taxes far longer than many of us have been residents of this town. After hearing the debate last Thursday, I think it is safe to say that we can all agree that Article twenty-five will be a welcome addition to other property tax relief provisions in our town bylaws. As a reminder, the Select Board unanimously endorsed Article twenty-five, five to zero, and the Advisory Committee endorsed twenty-five, fourteen in favor, zero against, with two abstentions, and our commission, the CDICR, endorsed twenty-five by a vote of nine to zero. But why stop there? Why stop with Article twenty-five? I believe there is more we can do to help, and that's why I'm standing here, to ask for your support on Article twenty-six. Please keep in mind that a yes vote for twenty-six will do nothing more than ask for a study committee to be appointed by the moderator that will assess the long-term costs and the potential viability of providing additional property tax relief outlined in this warrant article. The committee will be asked to report results back to all of us town meeting members at or prior to November, the November two thousand eighteen town meeting. So why should we do this? Why is it important to vote yes on twenty-six? Well, first, I don't want to rehash all of the eloquent arguments put forth last week by Susan Granoff about why we as a town should provide support for low-income seniors, but I did find one compelling point worth repeating, worth emphasizing. Property tax relief for low-income seniors is not just a financial issue, it is also a gender equity issue. As Susan mentioned, low-income seniors who qualify for the state circuit breaker tax credit are more often women than men, and in two thousand sixteen, the median household income in Brookline was ninety-six thousand dollars, while the median income for a senior woman living alone was just thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Please remember this disparity as you cash your vote in favor, in favor of Article twenty-six. Number two, as we all age, maintaining independence and control over our lives is critical to our well-being. Having folks decide on their own terms when it is time to leave a longtime residence is incredibly important. For some, the decision is easy, for others, not so much. I would be willing to guess that the vast majority of us, at one time or another, have personally experienced this decision-making process with a family member, a neighbor, or a close friend. It is one of the most challenging decisions a person may face later in life, especially a person with modest resources, as there are often not viable alternatives to remaining in place. When folks are ready to leave their home and go elsewhere, let it be their choice, as opposed to a choice imposed upon them because of continually rising property taxes that create an increasing hardship quarter after quarter, year after year. Number three, let's be honest with ourselves. What is our property tax future here in Brookline? Last Tuesday, we were reminded once again of our town's ongoing structural deficit. We also discussed the fact that we will need to find resources for the inevitable ninth school, or tenth school, and for the massive renovation budget that will be needed for Pierce and other elementary schools around town. And like it or not, we know we must support these future overrides and debt exclusions.
One minute.
What other choice do we have? Let us also take a moment to ask ourselves, how difficult will it be to pass subsequent overrides and debt exclusions to pay for these initiatives in the coming years? Remember, we had two in two thousand fifteen, and two more just a few weeks ago. Remember, all Article twenty-six asks for is the creation of a study committee, nothing more. And if it turns out that providing relief for just the incremental additional taxes levied by future overrides doesn't work, then it doesn't work. But if it can work, and if long-term cost had been out, nothing, turn out to be nothing more than what Advisory Committee Member Ben Bernbaum deemed a rounding error last week in our budget, then that will be good to know as well. So in conclusion, if we as a legislative body want to help address gender equity issues, help low-income seniors maintain control over their lives and their future, and help reduce a major potential obstacle in passing future overrides and debt exclusions, and remember, these are overrides that we will need to pay for our priorities-
Please conclude, sir.
-so that Brookline and our school system can continue to flourish. We owe it to ourselves and to our constituents to vote yes on Article twenty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hamilton? And Mr. Carroll, would you come forward, please?
Good evening. Heather Hamilton speaking for the Select Board. Like Article twenty-five, Article twenty-six would ask the town to authorize the Select Board to petition the legislature for a special act to allow for an exemption from future overrides and debt exclusions to seniors who are sixty-five years of age or older who meet certain income restrictions. This is sometimes referred to as a home rule petition. So regardless of whether or not this goes to a moderator's committee, we can't institute this, we actually have to petition the legislature to give us the ability to institute this, very much like warrant Article twenty-five. The Select Board is amenable to tax relief for fixed-income seniors. With the rise in local property values and the limited expansion of the fixed income that this community faces, it is difficult for some seniors to afford local property taxes and stay in their homes. The Board also recognizes that the median senior income falls below the median income within the town, and the income of senior women living alone is even lower. However, the Board also acknowledges that there are a multitude of challenges with the proposed program under this warrant article. The largest issue this article presents is the verification of income, which the town does not collect currently. Due to the lack of information, there is no way to accurately assess the impact of this program, so we couldn't get a cost estimate as to how much money this would require to make up for. The program would also not take the value of the property into account, which is one of the main qualifying factors of mass general law, and maintained as a qualification under warrant Article twenty-five. It is important to understand that the property tax levy will not change. Instead, the taxes would be shifted from the seniors that qualify for this program to other property owners in the town. The Board stressed the nature of shifting the tax burden within the community. The debt exclusions and overrides encompass more than the services provided by one department within the town, which is why the increase in property tax is spread over the entire town. Exempting one group of taxpayers from the burden of overrides and debt exclusions could present many unforeseen consequences. While the Board appreciates the intent of the petitioner, the legislation proposed under Article twenty-five made more sense to present to the legislature as a means to provide relief to low-income taxpayers. Therefore, the Board voted no action, by a vote of four in favor and one abstention. We also voted on the referral, and it was the same vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. And Ms. Granoff, would you come forward, please?
Hi, I'm Frank Carroll, Precinct Ten. I'm speaking in support of the motion to refer to a moderator's committee. I'd like to- I'd like to put my remarks in context, and I should say that many of the -- much of what I am going to say has already been said, so I'm going to be very brief. First of all, last night, last fall, and then again last week, Town Meeting took important steps to assist senior homeowners who are struggling to pay property taxes. And I should say that among the tools that we have available, I believe that the tax deferral program, in particular, is a powerful tool for senior homeowners who are rich in assets but short on cash. I spoke last fall about the need for us to do better public education to encourage more people to make use of that resource. And I should also say that I was personally very supportive of the override campaign and participated in urging seniors, in particular, to support the override and the debt exclusion, both in the recent campaign and three years ago. At the same time, I urge you to support this proposal for referral. And essentially, the point is that we need to be sensitive to seniors with modest incomes who are anxious about whether they can afford to continue living in Brookline. In this case, the financial concern comes from homeowners who are concerned about property taxes that are rising rapidly because of overrides and debt exclusions. We have reason to be concerned about the larger context, and that -- and actually, Susan Granoff spoke about that very effectively last week. And we've heard also that it is -- this is a concern particularly among older women, older unmarried women who are in a highly vulnerable situation financially. I should say, too, that part of the reality that we live with, and I should say that I couldn't help but hear this in the discussion that we have over in town, is that there's a portion of the population that really feels -- older population that feels disconnected from what's going on in the schools. They feel we're spending a lot of money on the schools. Their grandchildren and great-grandchildren do not attend Brookline public schools. They have no connection with the younger families who are moving into town to take advantage of the school system. And I -- it's because of this concern about a vulnerable population that is feeling alienated that I think we need to provide a form to allow these -- see whether these ideas can lead to something constructive. And that's essentially it. It's not a instance where I speak with you a lot of confidence that this is an idea that is going to prove fruitful, but I think we need to allow it to be fully developed and understood. So for that reason, I'm urging favorable action on the motion to refer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granoff.
Susan Granoff, Precinct 7. I believe that warrant Article 26 is a needed complement to warrant Article 25, the circuit breaker tax credit exemption that was passed by Town Meeting last week. They go hand in hand. Warrant Article 25 seeks to help seniors who are struggling to pay their current property taxes and the overrides and debt exclusions that we have already passed. But it won't provide any additional relief to help struggling seniors pay future overrides and debt exclusions. The maximum amount of the circuit breaker credit only goes up about $10 a year, so struggling seniors will definitely need additional help to pay for future overrides. That's where warrant Article 26 steps in. Warrant Article 26 is forward-looking and prudent. It anticipates that we, as a town, are very likely to pass two or more overrides and debt exclusions in the next decade, and it seeks to create a committee that will study senior override exemption programs existing in communities throughout the United States, and then craft a program that will be especially suited to Brookline's needs. It's worth the investment of time and resources to create a committee to study this. Now, dealing with the objections that have been raised to warrant Article 26. First, that of the Select Board about shifting the tax burden. When I was a student at Harvard Law School, we learned that there is no such thing as neutral tax policy. Every tax policy decision, whether to create an exemption or deciding not to, creates winners and losers, and involves shifting the tax burden from one demographic group to others, and it reflects the basic values of the decision-makers. Second, I was a member of the Senior Tax Policy Committee, and I can assure you that the committee spent no time researching the concept of senior override exemptions and studying existing programs throughout the nation. We merely voted on one specific proposal that was not income-restricted and applied only to seniors 80 years and older. Most of the focus of our committee was solely on improving the tax deferral program. Now, the tax deferral program is an excellent program, but it does have limitations. First, any senior homeowner who holds a conventional mortgage is barred by law from participating in the tax deferral program, barred under both federal and state law. Because both the tax deferral program and federal-state law require that first liens be held on the very same property to have a conventional mortgage and to participate in this program, and so they are exclusionary. You can't do one and the other. Second, the interest rate that the participant in the tax deferral program has, as soon as that participant dies, jumps immediately to 16 percent.
One minute.
And the town then -- if the taxed accrued amount has not been paid off within six months, the town has the right to foreclose on the property. That puts great pressure on senior heirs to sell the property quickly at bargain rates and not get fair market value. So it's no wonder, considering these limitations, that currently only eight seniors participate in this program. I urge that we create this committee so that we can finish the work that the Senior Tax Policy Committee started a year and a half ago. Thank you very much.
Ms. Fraley? And I trust you'll avoid repeating points that prior speakers have made?
That's my best. Regina Fraley, Precinct 16, speaking on behalf of this article. The bullets I want to hit are seniors living in their home for many years are the best deal in this town. They pay taxes. When they bought their homes, they got their trash and their water subsumed in their taxes. They no longer do. They're paying over $1,000 a year just to have those services. They -- I have lived in my home for 54 years. My daughter used 12 years of the schools. That means 42 years I've been paying taxes for the children of some of the people in this room, and I was happy to do it, because when I first moved here, we never heard the word override or debt exclusion. Now it's normal conversation, and we've had a few in just three years. So I often hear the critique that it's -- seniors are not paying their fair share. Less than 20 percent of the residents of the town have children in the schools. That means 80 percent are paying for your children in the schools. Depends where you stand with what's called fair. We have compassion in this town, and I know many of the seniors in this town very well. They have compassion for the children of teachers participating in the materials program. We have, in my neighborhood, children with only two or three feet of their property in the town of Brookline. They go to school for free in Brookline. And we have the Metco program. We have a lot of compassion if they're children. We seem to have so little for seniors. We need to have them. They are the best bargain in this town. I think that's pretty much it. I want you to have a balance of looking at how the seniors just contribute to this community, have contributed to this community. I think many of you know I've done a lot of volunteer service in this town. I get no pay for it. I would like to be able to go feet-first out of my home, and I don't know if I'd qualify for this program, but I'd like a chance to find out if I do. Thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, Marty Rosenthal, Precinct 9. Aside from the fact that I have enormous respect for Yolanda and Rhoda, and appreciate seeing them here again, I have a question that jumped out at me from the Advisory Committee's supplemental recommendation that -- did we get this tonight? Anyway, I'm colorblind, so I'm not sure if this is tonight's. But it's the sentence that says the town is already -- well, it's the end of the sentence in the fourth paragraph. "The town is already working to address the petitioner's concerns." I'm wondering what that means in light of what Susan said, which was news to me, that the committee last year did not spend a lot of time working on this, and I'm wondering whether or not there's a sense, at least by any member of the Select Board, that this is a legitimate issue, but it needs work and to keep working on this issue. I do agree that the motion, the original motion, is not ready for primetime, but I also believe that it's an issue worthy of further study, and maybe there is something that could be done. And lastly, I know that the income verification issue is a little tricky, but I guess I'm not convinced that that's insoluble. So I'm trying to direct a question, if anyone on the Select Board is willing to bite it, bite at answering it, and even whether the committee from last year might be requested to reconvene.
Ms. Hamilton, do you want to try to respond to Mr. Rosenthal's many-horned question? Mr. Franco?
Ben Franco for the Select Board. I had the pleasure last year of chairing a committee, which you heard Mr. Gordon speak about at a 10,000-foot view. We met for eight months, over eight meetings, and delivered what I think is a pretty impressive report. We devoted, I would say, a substantial portion of two of those meetings to a version of this proposal that's before the body tonight. And ultimately, we made the determination that it was a shift of burden from one group of taxpayers to another, and that was not sound public policy. As we all know, as Town Meeting Members, the tax levy is a zero-sum game. What one group of taxpayers pays is relieved from another. So if you take a group of taxpayers out, people over the age of 70, people under the age of 35, that part of the levy has to be made up by others. We didn't find it sound public policy to shift the burden from one group to another. And in that vein, we recommended several other programs which didn't shift the burden that provided relief to this group of worthy taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Selwyn.
May I just follow up, Mr. Moderator? A brief question?
Go ahead.
Yes, to Mr. Franco, if you're willing to ask him if he's willing to answer it. Was a more targeted shift studied last year in terms of narrowing the pool of people that would get tax relief? And I guess that's the kind of thing that I'm thinking could be studied.
Mr. Franco?
We did not discuss a more targeted shifting of the burden. As you'll remember, and Mr. Gordon reminded us, we brought three warrant articles before the body. One to reduce the interest rate on the deferral program, one to shift the eligibility criteria, and a third which set up a check-the-box system for low, moderate-income seniors and disabled individuals. We also brought several other recommendations, one of which was to try and collect some of the income data that frustrated the previous committee so much. Another was to partner with non-Town resources, perhaps some of our local banks, to help seniors who may be in need of some relief receive it through some counseling or advice. We, I think at the end, concluded that town government had a role to play in this conversation, but it didn't have the expertise necessarily, and we should avail ourselves of some of our community partners.
Thank you, Mr. Selwyn.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lee Selwyn, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13.
Closer to the microphone, please.
Sorry. I'm wondering if the petitioner cited some median income statistics, and I was curious to know whether those are -- pertain solely to homeowners, to owners, whether they're houses or condos, or whether they also include renters?
Ms. Rodriguez? Is there a simple answer to that? Well, why don't you come to the mic, to the podium, Ms. Rodriguez, see if you can respond to Mr. Selwyn?
I'm not sure that I have--
Into the microphone.
Sorry. Ms. Selwyn, I'm not sure that I have the data that you're requesting completely, but much of the data that we got came from the Brookline Housing Production Plan, put together by RKG Associates, and from something called Elder Resource Guide. And my understanding, I would say that this was -- that this included tenants as well, because I'm sure that when we were given the median income among Brookline senior women living alone at $32,500, some of those people may be in housing, in tenant housing.
So if the -- just to make sure I understand, if there is a senior woman living alone with a median income of $32,000 who is a tenant, and you end up shifting the burden from senior homeowners to other categories of taxpayers, then landlords would experience an increase in taxes, which would then be passed on to those renters in that same income category. Is that correct?
It depends on the program and how the committee decides to do this. If it goes to a moderators' committee and things are looked at, that would be a piece. I think that when we -- when you passed Article 25, there was data that said it would apply possibly to 50 people, and that would be $55,000, I believe it was that they said. If I were -- I met with Gary McCabe many, many times, God bless him, really good person, and he gave me to understand how that assessment could be arrived at. So for example, if 5% override were to pass in a town for a million-dollar home, not tenant, but home, the tax on a million-dollar home, he said, would be $9,500, 5% increase. On my calculator, said 475 would be an increase. If you multiply that by the 50 people that might qualify according to the standards that Article 25 had, that would come to 23,750. I thought, double it, make it 100, that would come to 47,500, which is still less than the amount that you may be paying on Article 25. I think that this program, as we had seen it, not as what the moderators' committee may respond to, but as we had seen it, it would be something where a person, probably a homeowner, would apply each year. They would -- there's no way to know their income, but there's a way to know their income, but there's a way to know their age and how many there are. And they would submit probably their federal income tax form. And so you would know if they qualified under the cap. It's a means-tested program. And if they do apply, it would be a yearly application, and then you would know.
Well, Ms. Rodriguez, we're a long way from there. We're wrestling over whether to refer this matter to a moderators' committee, and I think you're getting a little more deeply into the...
I'm in the weeds here, and I'm not sure I can answer it, but Frank Carroll and Susan Granoff can probably give you a better answer than I can on that.
Mr. Spiegel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Stanley Spiegel, Precinct 2. In view of the response Mr. Rosenthal just got a few moments ago from select person Franco, I think it's relevant to point out that the Select Board already routinely enacts policies that shift the tax burden from one group of taxpayers to another. It's done every year. The classification, tax classification, which shifts property taxes from resident homeowners to commercial enterprises. And then there's the residential exemption, which shifts the burden from resident homeowners to non-residents, and from low-end or low access-value properties to higher-access-value properties. So it is by no means the notion that to shift from one group of taxpayers to another is abhorrent. In fact, it's routinely done. This is a different request. It may or may not be worthwhile, but it certainly should not be rejected on the grounds that it involves a shift. We do this every year, all the time, by the Select Board. Thank you.
Mr. Frye? Well, I've called on Mr. Frye. I will then take a motion for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ernie Frye, Precinct 7. Mr. Spiegel has summed up a lot better than I could my concerns, that this is a matter that should be studied. And just because... And we normally do shift burdens from one class of taxpayers to another. And I would support this warrant article.
Thank you. Well, I've... We're not there yet. We have before us a motion for the question. Is there a second? You see who's at the microphones, and all those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a 2/3 vote. Mr. Carroll would like a recorded vote. Are there 35 town meeting members who would like a recorded vote? And there certainly are. This is Article 27... 26, main motion. Article... Press 1 if you favor referral of this... Yes. It's the motion on page 26-2 to refer to a moderators' committee. 1 if you support referral, 2 if you oppose referral, and 3 if you abstain. Motion carries by a vote of 146 in favor, 48 against, and 8 abstentions. Now, ladies and gentlemen, the other part of this referral motion has to do with the moderators' committee. I'm the moderator. I get to appoint the committee. And if any of you are interested in serving on this committee, would you please email... send an email to me with the credentials that you think qualify you to serve on a committee dealing with this subject matter. I would greatly appreciate that. Article 27. Now, we've just spent 40 minutes struggling with a motion to refer. We have 10 more articles to deal with, nine, I guess. And those of you who hope to complete our business this evening might consider shorter presentations. Article 27. The motion under Article 27 is on page 27-4. Moved by Ms. Connors, seconded by Ms. Carroll. Resolution concerning the inclusion of living-wage exempt employees in the town's annual financial plan. It is a resolution, not a substantive motion, Ms. Connors.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patricia Connors, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Town Meeting enacted the Living Wage Bylaw in 2001. This bylaw includes both a living wage rate currently $13.98 per hour, and for those town employees who are exempt from the living wage rate, a town minimum wage rate presently $12 per hour. The living wage rate is adjusted annually by the same percentage as wage adjustments for full-time, non-union employees. The minimum wage is adjusted when the state minimum wage rate changes, so that the town minimum wage rate is at least $1 more than the state minimum wage. The whereas clauses of the original Living Wage Bylaw warrant article in 2001 still hold true today and bear repeating. Whereas, the wages of many workers nationwide have not kept pace with the cost of providing for themselves or their families. Whereas, Town Meeting must ensure that taxpayers' dollars are used responsibly to improve the economic security and well-being of town employees. Whereas, town government must lead town businesses and contractors by example to engage in and support fair wage practices in Brookline, et cetera. Many states are in the midst of progressive campaigns to increase their state minimum wages. Incredibly, five states have yet to adopt a state minimum wage: Alabama, Louisiana, Mississippi, South Carolina, and Tennessee. And closer to home, New Hampshire repealed its state minimum wage in 2011, but adopted the federal minimum wage by reference, which is now $7.25 per hour. Meanwhile, here in Massachusetts, the social justice organization Raise Up Massachusetts is fighting for a statewide $15 minimum wage by the year 2021. As the town's financial plan outlines the budgetary needs of the town for the coming fiscal year, including employee wages, it seems appropriate that this, quote, "budget book" include also the town's lowest wages in each of its departments. Procedurally, Town Meeting here would be recommending that the town administrator instruct town departments to take this action. It's a strong statement from you, the legislative branch, to the administration, that you, the legislators of the Living Wage Bylaw, want the administration to publicly and transparently report in its annual financial plan the wages of our town's lowest-paid employees. I urge you to vote favorable action on the Advisory Committee's motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carroll.
Carol Carroll, Precinct 10, speaking for the Advisory Committee. Warrant Article 27 was originally submitted as an amendment to Section 4.8.5 of the town's Living Wage Bylaw. That would require the town annual financial plan list details of all recreation department positions that are exempt from Brookline's living wage law. The petitioner felt this information is necessary to allow Town Meeting to moderate compliance with the bylaw. However, the Advisory Committee concluded that a bylaw amendment was not the appropriate vehicle for achieving the petitioner's goal, and recommended no action. The petitioner then offered a resolution under Article 27 that recommends that the town administrator provide the information in the annual financial plan. More specifically, that all department heads would be asked to include in the annual financial plan those staff positions that are exempt from the town's living wage under the living wage law. They would report the high-to-low range of compensation for each exempt position, an appropriate number of full-time equivalents in each position. By a vote of 12, 0, 5, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on Article 27 as amended by the petitioner.
Thank you, Mr. Waschinsky. And Ms. Vanderzeil, would you please come forward if you still wish to be heard?
Select Board agrees with the motion. Please vote the favorable action.
Ms. Vanderzeil?
Cornelia Vanderzeil, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 15, and I'm speaking in... for the Commission for Diversity and Inclusion in Community Relations. The Commission took this warrant article up on May 9 and voted unanimously support it. We feel that the reporting requirement embodied in this warrant article is not onerous, and it would increase transparency and accountability with regards to the job titles and salary ranges of town employees who are not paid the town's living wage. The article is in line with the Commission's work to increase inclusion, diversity, and respect in the town's workforce.
On the motion on page 27-4, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. We now turn to Articles 28 to 30. We'll have a single debate on those articles, and there is... will be a single motion before you, a motion to refer. The main motion is that set forth on the lavender supplement, page 2. At the top, resolved that the Select Board appoint a committee to study the subject matter of these articles, as will be clear to you when you hear from the speakers. Moved by Mr. Green, seconded by the petitioner, Mr. Renanian. Mr. Rosenthal moves a substitute motion, which is contained on the gray supplement number 2. And it's seconded by Mr. Nero. And the differences between these two motions, both of which call for referral, will be hopefully made clear to you by the speakers. The way we will treat these two competing referral motions when we get to vote is that we will first vote on Mr. Rosenthal's substitute motion. And if that fails, then we'll vote on the selectman's referral motion. If it succeeds, it acts as a complete amendment of the selectman's motion, and we will have another vote on the Rosenthal referral motion, the final vote. And I will explain that again when we get to the voting session. Mr. Renanian? And remember, the subject matter of these motions is for referral. And while I'll certainly permit a certain amount of explanation of what the articles are all about, the thrust of the motions before you are for referral. Mr. Renanian?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. Let's get this sorted. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Scott Renanian. I'm a Town Meeting Member for Brookline Precinct 10, and a petitioner for warrant articles 28, 29, 30, which support community control of surveillance and military technology. I am a technologist. I work for the Wikimedia Foundation, which supports Wikipedia, and I've been working on electronic freedom issues since 2001. And while they set up this, I'd like to thank both our technical staff here and the members of the many committees, CDICR, SIMS, Advisory, CTOSS, and the Police Department and Town Council for the time advice they've given me on these articles.
While we're fixing the presentation here, the motion under Article 26, the vote was 147, not 146 in favor, 48 opposed, and 8 abstentions. Correction of the vote. And I won't... You can start over when your... when the presentation is... Your PowerPoint's ready.
Thank you. I don't think I need to reintroduce myself, but thank you.
No, you don't.
Let's make sure I know how to go to the next slide. Great. So what is it? This is a surveillance... Sorry. This is a surveillance oversight ordinance. And what is it? The goal here is pretty simple, is to define a category of potentially problematic technologies that require cautious review. It's not a ban on any technologies. It's just intended to set a bright line for these are the things that we think deserve careful review in town. And for these technologies, specifically that they would require a public hearing and a vote by the police commissioners, which are our select board, and a report by experts. And that there be an annual review of affected technologies to deal with omnipresent change. Technology does not stand still. There's technological change. There's cultural change in terms of what we expect and accept, as well as best practices change over time with data retention and policies like that. So some case studies in town in brief. I'm going to go through some of these slides very quickly. I apologize for that. Our Brookline schools have entryway and garage cameras and RFID entry systems. That data for those RFID entry systems, I was informed today, could be kept for up to 10 years. So every time you've gone into or out of a Brookline school, that data is recorded. And the information could be released as a public records request. But, I mean, and again, what I'm proposing is not a ban. It's not to say that any of these things are bad necessarily. We like the security the RFID systems provide, just that we need to require some careful oversight in town. I'd like to suggest that we do so. Our Department of Public Works operates a drone to inspect the water tower on Single Tree Hill. We have library circulation records. There are cameras in the library. There are 11 SIMS cameras, which we'll talk about a little bit later, and two that were given... funded by a grant from Homeland Security, which are wireless quick deploy cameras, which wander around town. There's also cameras of the Public Safety Building, the Brookline Housing Authority Town Hall, and the Health Department. And very quickly, I'll show you some pretty pictures, thanks to the gumshoe work of Clint Richmond, for whom I thank. So quickly, these are the locations of the SIMS cameras on arteries around town. They look something like that. There are these wireless mobile cameras, which wander around town. There's cameras outside the Public Safety Building, outside Town Hall. There's cameras in the Brookline Public Library. There's cameras in front of the Department of Public Health, public schools, DPW. There's the inspection yard that the DPW owns. There are cameras all around the perimeter of the Brookline Housing Authority as well. And again, not to say that these are necessarily bad, just that we think that the community who is being affected by them should have a say in how they're used. So it's not just Brookline. The efforts to implement sort of oversight of surveillance are also going on in our nearby communities, Arlington, Cambridge, and Somerville, as well as across the country in 20 different cities, including a lot of the usual suspects on the left coast. And again, this is our chance not to necessarily lead in Brookline, but to perhaps be a close follower of our fellow progressive communities who've started paying attention to these issues. The thing that's important to me is that this is not just a technological issue. There are some technological issues about best practices for data collection and retention and those sorts of things. But I believe firmly that this is a social justice issue, which is why I'm coming to it. We want to proactively ensure that there are good policies in place before we have... encounter problems. I don't want to clean up after messes. I'd rather us start to craft these policies, they're right from the start. Let's not let this slip under the radar, but charge a group to look very specifically for disparate impacts to affected communities, so that we're always on guard against even inadvertent injustice. So what does this look like in practice? So here's a little tour through the Police Department's annual report, page 23, 25. So there... On the left are field interrogation statistics, broken down by race, and the green bars are this year. This is most recent annual report. And on the right are moving violations. So they do have a... Driving while black has been a recognized problem in our town, and there is a committee which reviews this regularly and pays careful attention to these statistics. And you'll see that the statistics on the right look pretty good. And you’ll see that the statistics on the right look pretty good. Statistics on the left, perhaps less so, unless you think that our community is almost half-black. So the point here is that auditing works. So we already have auditing committees in place for a lot of these issues, for example, moving violations. And we, in fact, for some of the cameras in town, we also do. And I’m encouraging us to establish some more auditing with a broader focus on surveillance technologies. Since we’re leafing through the annual report, I’m just going to briefly address a statement I saw in several of our, the reports on this issue about specifically military technologies, which says we don’t have any in town, and that this may be the true, but on page 51, we are actually considering requiring more U.S.C. grants for our special response team. So again, regardless, the point isn’t whether or not we even have these in town. If the will of Town Meeting is that we not have military technologies in town, the goal is let’s establish that ahead of time. Or if some of them are good, let’s establish a policy that lets us separate the good from the bad. Codifies our wishes and makes it concrete. So here’s more from the annual report, Brookline Police Department. The Critical Infrastructure Monitoring System, these are the cameras I talked about before. You’ll see, we do have an audit committee, and it is doing its job. There were no incidents of misuse reported, and there are no violations of policy, which is good. However, the section highlighted in red is they’re currently being operated in violation of the policy, of the policy of the police commissioners, in fact.
You have one minute.
Thank you. So yeah, briefly, the Town Meeting voted to ban them. The selectmen heard them shuttered, and they’re still being operated. And very briefly, in Sanctuary, the same sort of thing happened. There were special orders issued that sort of violated the will of Town Meeting, as expressed through votes here. So the vote before you, to conclude, again, I’m not, I’m recommending referral to the Committee for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, because I believe that that is the correct venue for this, these articles. I have highest confidence in Selectman Green’s leadership of the referral committee, having been part of his work on Sanctuary last year. But fundamentally, I believe that the Select Board are not the best suited to lead the work. Twice in recent history, the Board has, through oversight, allowed police policies to be put into effect that did directly contradict the will of Town Meeting. I don’t attribute this to malice, simply overwork. I believe a separate, more focused body is better suited to advise and prod the Select Board on these matters. And the CDICR, the Committee for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, is the body that we have explicitly set up in town to provide this role for issues of civil liberties and social justice.
Please conclude.
And so, yes, concluding. So I urge a vote yes on the Rosenthal amendment, to put this in front of the Committee for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. And whether amended or not, yes on the main motion. Thank you.
Mr. Rosenthal? Not entirely clear to me, Mr. Renanian, which of these motions you support. If you vote yes on Mr. Rosenthal’s, that’s the only motion that’s going to be possibly passed. I thought you were supporting the selectman’s motion on page 2 of the lavender supplement. But be that as it may, Mr. Rosenthal, how does the main motion differ from yours?
Yes, does this stay here? Well, I’m just worried about putting anything on top of it, that’s all. My computer, if I do, something would go wrong. I’m Marty Rosenthal, Precinct 9, also a minority member of the CTOS and co-chair of Brookline PACS, and a former selectman and former police commissioner. As per our PACS letter to all of you, we thank Scott for raising some important issues about both substance and process. While 28 to 30 need considerable study and refinement, both substantive and procedural, we oppose both no action, as the advisory committee had for weeks recommended, and even a Select Board’s version of CTOS’s majority referral motion, which the advisory committee now looks to me pretty begrudgingly accepts. Our three main concerns persist. The Select Board motion, as well as their CTOS and advisory committee’s explanations, will really be the charge that the study committee and its legislative history as well. However, none of these powers that be, if I could call them that collectively, took the pertinent issues, both immediate and future, seriously enough. The best endorsement in all three of them is the Select Board’s backhanded, isolated, sentence, backhanded compliment. However, in the spirit of acknowledging that the use of military and surveillance equipment is a legitimate concern in our society, we will support a referral of this general matter to the Select Board-appointed study committee. That’s the best that anyone could say out of those three bodies. There’s actually some serious things that are in here. Our motion is far more inclusive and less begrudging. For instance, our carefully chosen and very common language refer the general subject matters of Articles 28 to 30. By contrast, the CTOS report, approvingly referenced by the Select Board, said the articles should not form a starting point because they compromise public safety. I found that to be a bit of a stretch, to be honest. Some things were mentioned that might, but there’s so much more that’s in there that doesn’t. What are the other, what are these other, what is the other motion missing? Some examples are most important and first is, the first paragraph of Article 28 talks about institutionalizing an ongoing process for citizen input, including public hearings on police issues before our Select Boards. This included at great length an excerpt from the 1987 Report on Policing Community Relations, one of my favorite work products ever. And frankly, recent boards of, Select Boards have been a little erratic on that. They’ve done it sometimes, and sometimes they haven’t. Secondly, there are some specific issues, either current or proliferating everywhere, that are within the scope of Articles 20, 28 to 30, and some of them we identify in our explanation and in our motion. Things like body and cruiser cameras. I’ve heard very little objection to having them. They’re happening everywhere. They have very complicated issues, and they need to be resolved by a study committee, but I hope we can move forward with them. And then, has anybody really thought about all the things that are not in Scott’s article? I mean, we are really in a brave new technology world. We have Russians, Facebook, and even Alexa and Echo snooping on us and misusing our whatevers. Who in this room can even imagine the technologies of the 2020s, let alone see it with 2020 vision? I’m sorry. I doubt even Scott or even our wonderful info tech staff could do so. If any of you have that kind of foresight, please come testify before whoever studies this. And please suggest an ongoing citizen input process to deal with it, them, or whatever. Today’s New York Times had not one but two pertinent articles, one, an op-ed entitled “Data Subjects of the World Unite.” I never heard the word “data subjects,” but it’s in the European Union’s new digital privacy law.
One minute.
And push to expand speed cameras mired in Albany politics. These are cameras to detect speeders. I don’t know how they detect the drivers, maybe, I’m sure somebody has an argument on that. Who should, and finally, the question is, who should be the leadership and initial focus point for the nitty-gritty chores here? I have great respect for our Select Board, the most progressive-
Thirty seconds.
-since 1988, and for the Camera Committee. But the CTOS, the Diversity Commission has proven its worth on Sanctuary. They are the perfect commission to oversee this in conjunction with the Select Board, which I added after the CTOS motion was voted.
Ten seconds.
They would trade off the needs of public safety against the needs for human rights and balance the two and come out in a perfect place. So please vote for my referral motion, PACS’s referral motion, and I guess it’s endorsed by Mr. Renanian.
Well, I think that’s the reasonable construction of Mr. Renanian’s presentation. So we’ve heard two presentations in favor of the Rosenthal motion, so we’ll have two people speak who are, who favor the selectman’s motion, and the first of those will be Mr. Benka.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dick Benka of the Committee on Town Organization and Structure, speaking in favor of the main motion endorsed by the selectman and an overwhelming majority of the advisory committee. CTONS was created by bylaw and is appointed by the moderator, and it’s designed to provide some institutional background. In November 2010, CTONS unanimously supported designation of the Select Board as police commissioners to ensure civilian oversight responsibility. Our recommendation today is consistent with that. We want to ensure that important issues are balanced and that responsibility clearly rests where it should. We therefore recommended referral to a committee constituted by the Select Board. The Select Board took the CTON, CTONS recommendation and improved it, making clear the need for a public hearing. There is the competing Rosenthal motion, seeking referral to a so-called working group established by the Commission for Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations. What are the arguments for that? One argument has been that the Select Board already has too much to do to form a working group. Well, the Select Board has already agreed to form the committee, and Select Person Green has agreed to chair it. Another has been that the subject matter of the main motion is too narrow and that members of the study committee are defined too specifically. However, the main motion actually and explicitly incorporates the broad subject matter language of Article 28. And the motion simply lists potential members for the Select Board to consider. The third argument has been that surveillance raises civil rights issues, which is the purview and the focus of CDICR, and that CDICR did a good job on Sanctuary cities. That is true. But unlike Sanctuary cities, where the police made clear that a robust policy would not hamper local law enforcement but could actually enhance it, in this case, in this case, the Articles and the concept of Articles 28 to 30 potentially attack the core of law enforcement and local law enforcement in Brookline. This is not just about civil rights and privacy, it’s about public safety and judicial process. Some examples. Under the Articles, even where a court has issued a valid search warrant for electronic surveillance, there would have to be a public hearing and approval by the Select Board with 48 hours’ notice before the police could actually execute that warrant and use surveillance, totally ignoring the fact that the Select Board public hearing would likely make the judicial search warrant utterly useless. And again, even with a valid judicial search warrant complying with all constitutional requirements, without the public hearing and Select Board approval, any citizen of the town, according to the Articles, could institute proceedings for the suppression of evidence. The point here is that a difficult balance has to be struck between civil rights and privacy interests on the one hand and public safety on the other. And the Select Board is the one body responsible for focusing on both sides of that issue. The Select Board also has the standing to recruit individuals with the breadth of expertise and experience. And finally, and perhaps most importantly-
One minute.
-as the executive body ultimately in charge of town departments and as the police commissioners, the Select Board, in the view of CTONS, must take on responsibility here. The competing referral motion for CDICR has CDICR consulting with the Select Board and forming a working group supervised by CDICR. Who has responsibility for the outcome? CDICR, the working group, the Select Board? That is not a way to create accountability. If Town Meeting agrees that these issues are important enough to be referred for further study, CTONS believes that they are important enough for the Select Board to take clear responsibility for them from day one. The Select Board is the one body in town that must answer directly to all of us for the balance that is struck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. And Mr. Palenbaum, would you come forward, please?
Mr., sorry, Moderator Gatsby. Bernard Green, speaking for the Select Board. I’m here to urge you to vote yes on the Select Board motion, which I believe addresses many, if not all, of the issues that concern Mr. Rosenthal. First, some background on what I think are useful elements of the warrant articles that were initially proposed. At the Select Board meeting on April 10, a representative of the Police Department described how two suspects in a stabbing at Boston University were apprehended. The Police Department accessed surveillance videos and location data from various sources, including the MBTA, Boston University, cell phone companies, and Boston Police. Using this information, they were able to track the movements of the suspects and identify and arrest them. We should all applaud how modern technology is so valuable in taking these two dangerous suspects off the streets. But maybe we should be a little alarmed also. Have we finally entered George Orwell’s 1984, where our every move is watched, recorded, compiled, and available for use for various purposes? And let me raise another concern with respect to the other side of these warrant articles, and that’s the military equipment. We all remember the photos of local police in Ferguson, Missouri, in full macho military gear, confronting protesters with their long garns pointed straight ahead, thereby showing a total lack of training and discipline. Now, I don’t think that those problems will be issues here in Brookline, but they do illustrate the dangers of unregulated surveillance technology and military equipment. Such technology and equipment may offer many, many benefits. It would be dangerously naive to fail to recognize the threats that they also pose. Other presenters will describe in detail those benefits and threats, but my focus will be the Select Board’s recommendation that a Select Board committee study this technology and equipment and devise safeguards against their abuse. The Select Board is the appropriate body to oversee such a study and develop and implement recommendations that would be applicable to Brookline. It is best situated to balance the benefits against the dangers of surveillance technology and military equipment, and has the authority, meaning the power, to develop policies and procedures for town departments and direct their implementation to enhance public safety without undermining civil liberties and privacy concerns. That’s basically what we did with the Sanctuary Town policies. Is also the body best able to work collaboratively with the school departments, the library, and public housing authority, and others to coherently address these issues across the town. At its May 15 meeting, the Select Board discussed warrant Articles 28 to 30 in some detail. The Board noted that, as written, they presented insurmountable problems and were not useful bases for Board action. But the Board did acknowledge the importance to the town of addressing the general issues they raised and voted five to zero to support the resolution on page 2 of what I thought was a purple pages, but apparently lavender pages, in your supplement, supplement number one, referring the issues to a committee to be appointed by the Select Board, and appointments would include representatives of the public and relevant town and school agencies-
One minute.
-such as the Commission on Diversity, Inclusion, and Community Relations, Police Department, et cetera. The proposed committee would study the issues associated with surveillance technology and military equipment, including the use of such equipment in Brookline and any local policies or procedures governing them. Warrant Article 28 to 30 would not be the starting point of the study, rather the committee will start fresh, looking at the often different issues presented by surveillance technology and military equipment. The committee should direct its attention to the particular realities of Brookline, not the scary scenarios that may unfold in other less enlightened jurisdictions. After at least one public hearing, the committee would make its recommendations to the Select Board, and the resolution contemplates that the committee will produce, among other things, an inventory of surveillance equipment and military equipment. I’d like to see other tasks, including distinguishing technologies and equipment that need high-level oversight from those that require less oversight.
Please conclude, Mr.- Please conclude, Mr. Green.
Two sentences. Looking at surveillance and data gathering by regional or national organizations, such as a local BRIC, and determining whether Brookline's voluntary or involuntary relationships with such organizations needs additional oversight, transparency, or controls, and looking at existing laws governing private cameras and any protections that the town can provide against their misuse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Ian Pollenbaum, I'm speaking, I'm Precinct Six resident, I'm speaking as a member of the Camera Oversight Committee. I'm one of five members of the committee, which, under the original underlying Article 29, would be abolished and therefore our powerful and lucrative posts would be pried from our warm, living hands. We're actually not invested in that aspect of the proposals. We serve at the pleasure of the Select Board. We were given a narrow mission, we discharged that, and then some, taking reports from the police chief, taking public comment, making recommendations some time back. Not necessarily the recommendations that everybody expected or wanted us to make, but doing our job nonetheless, a committee that was 20 percent prosecution, me, 60 percent criminal defense attorneys, whose job it is to keep track of the government and keep the government honest and fight the government. Recommendations included to run the cameras 24/7, that ended up happening by default. Recommendations included extending the retention period for video from 14 days to 30 days to comply with state law. That recommendation was ignored, and the town continues to violate state law every day by purging that footage after two weeks. If our mandate at the end of all this ends up widened, that's fine. If we get folded into some broader effort or panel, that's fine. If we get abolished, it's more time with our families, and that's fine, too. We did take on ourselves in April to have a public hearing and meeting on Articles 28, 29, and 30. And at that time, with the Articles themselves on the table, we voted unanimously for no action, and that was for the same reasons that have already been discussed, that, as written, 28 and 29 are really ill-conceived boilerplate. They're so broad in their definitions and their requirements for studies, hearings, reports, that they would severely complicate the daily functions, not only the Police Department, but also nearly all town departments, including some of the ones that the petitioner mentioned. And they also purported to create a lot of separate grounds for litigation. Anybody familiar with all the great work the ACLU has done on so many issues for so many years would really be shocked looking at these in terms of how ill-conceived they are. And in terms of the other jurisdictions or cities that have adopted them, the Somerville Executive Order is a page and a half, much more clear, much more concise, much less hampering of law enforcement. The only jurisdiction I'm aware of that's come close to adopting something really like this boilerplate is Oakland. I'd suggest they're going to have huge problems in terms of practical effects. Our vote back in April took place quite a while before Mr. Rosenthal and the Select Board filed their motions to refer. And both of these motions address the committee's main concern, which it takes the unworkable Articles themselves off the table in favor of referring the general subject matter. Unlike the Advisory Committee, we haven't met 17 times since then, or even once, so we never got to reconsider those. But we can't quarrel on the committee, I think I'd speak comfortably for everyone on it, with further discussion of the issue. Discussion of these issues of government technology and intrusion versus privacy and individual rights, that very discussion created the committee that I'm on and sustains it and could erase it, which is, again, a demise that we don't fear. If the subject matter is referred, I would suggest, even though Marty's done some great work on this, that the Select Board version is far better. And I'll try and give you a few reasons that are a little different from the ones you've already heard.
We have one minute to do so.
Thank you. Number one, the Select Board motion proposes a working group that's crafted for this specific purpose and devoted to this specialized issue and doesn't shoehorn it to the purview of another committee that may seem like the one that fits the best. The second is that the Select Board version gives some guidance, not binding, but guidance on the membership of the working group, so all the stakeholders, from law enforcement to technical to civil liberties, to diversity and inclusion across the board are represented, and that's part of the mandate. And third, the Select Board motion doesn't assume, as Mr. Rosenthal does, that the end game is another warrant article, that the idea is, let's build a better warrant article and bring it back to Town Meeting. I know it's not something that a lot of people in this room necessarily want to hear, but the answer to everything isn't something that comes from Town Meeting. The working group would make recommendations based on its work, rather than working toward a preordained result of a more palatable warrant article.
Please conclude, sir.
The Select Board is the executive authority, they could decide policy as they see fit. Thank you.
The question has been called. I think I'll allow it because between Mr. Ananian's description of what's in these warrant articles and Mr. Rosenthal, particularly Mr. Banker's description of the difference between the two referral motions, I think we have everything we need before us to vote intelligently on these two motions. Is there a second to the motion to terminate debate? I have...
Can you guys hear Roosevelt's speech?
Yes, yes. Come on, Marty, I'll get to it.
Yeah, all right. All right.
In favor of the selectman's referral motion, Ms. Jonas for the Advisory Committee, and Kate Crockford from ACLU, I believe she's in favor of that, although she's an Ananian proxy, and I was wrong about him. In favor of the Rosenthal version of the referral motion, Mr. Nero and Ms. Smith, you saw Ms. Spiegel at the microphone. It requires a two-thirds vote to terminate debate. Those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. Now, the main difference between these two motions is the, yes, we will have a recorded vote if 35 Town Meeting members want one. Let's have a show of hands. Thank you. That's on both motions? Well, we'll take the Rosenthal motion first. In any case, the main difference is the role of the Committee on, Commission on Diversity in the two referral scenarios, and that's been described by Mr. Rosenthal and Mr. Banker. So we will vote first on the Rosenthal motion on page one of supplement number two, the gray supplement. If that fails, we will then vote on the selectman's motion on page two of supplement number one, the what I call lavender supplement. If it succeeds, we will vote again on the Rosenthal referral motion, since the first vote is as an amendment, amendment in full of the selectman's motion. So, this is Articles 28 to 30, Rosenthal motion. And this will dispose of all three of those articles because the referral applies to all. You can start the timing of vote one if you favor the Rosenthal emotion, vote two if you oppose it, and three if you abstain. On the main motion, which is that of the selectman, on the lavender supplement, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by a majority vote. That disposes of Articles 28 to 30. We now turn to Article 31. It's quarter of 10, and let me just give you a preview of coming attractions here. On Articles 31, 32, 33, and all of the rest of the Articles, there are four or five speakers signed up for each one, all in favor of the main motion before you. And there are no opposing speakers who have signed up on any of these articles. So there's some possibility that we can dispose of the other six Articles in this session of Town Meeting. Article 31. The motion under Article 31 is on page 31-7 to 10, I believe. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's right.
No, I'm sorry, it's the Select Board's motion, is that correct, Mr. Richmond? Okay, it's on pages one through five of the orange supplement, starting at the bottom, that the town amend Article 8.32 of the general laws, general bylaws, by deleting it in its entirety and replacing it with the following relating to sustainable food containers and packaging. Move by Ms. Heller, seconded by Mr. Richmond. Mr. Richmond.
Let me speak first, yes.
Yes, Mr. Dempsey.
Hi, I'm John Dempsey, I'm Chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. It's no secret that the world is drowning in plastic. Single-use plastic packaging now accounts for almost half of the plastic waste that we have to dispose of as a society. The Brookline Town Meeting recognized that years ago and voted to turn away from single-use plastic bags and polystyrene foam food containers. We all adapted. Other communities followed our lead. Now, this article updates the Sustainable Packaging Bylaw in two ways. First, beginning in 2020, it will require food vendors to offer customers utensils, straws, and stirs that are sustainable. And those vendors will be required to package food, only food prepared at their sites, to containers, in containers that are not benzene-based, number-one plastic, or polyvinyl chloride, number-three plastic. The second thing is with this article, retail stores in Brookline that sell polystyrene foam cups and plates and polystyrene packing peanuts and beer coolers will no longer stock those. So those are the two things that you're voting on. These will, I'll give you a couple of examples of how this will affect Brookline businesses and, by extension, we, the customers. Number one, a restaurant, a sit-down or take-out restaurant, will only offer utensils, stirs, and straws that can be recycled at the curb, composted, or reused. Second example, a restaurant, sit-down or take-out, or a grocery store, or a coffee shop, will package food and drink that is prepared at the site in containers that are not made from number-one plastic or number-two plastic, number-three plastic, I'm sorry. And a third example, polystyrene foam cups and plates and polystyrene packing materials and coolers currently for sale in retail stores will be replaced by more sustainable versions of these products. Food vendors who do most of their business as caterers, there will be no change at all with this article. There may be a slight increase in prices, but it's highly likely that in the two years when this comes into effect, that sustainable items will be competitive in pricing. If you pass this article, Brookline will take one more small step towards sustainability. Our past experience is that we will all adapt. Other municipalities, even the Commonwealth, if Frank Smizik's and Senator Cream's legislation passes, they will follow. Thank you very much.
You have three minutes, three and a half.
Thank you. Clint Richmond, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six, also a member of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. I'm going to go through these quickly. I want to point out that there are climate linkages between plastics and fossil fuels. We can't keep them in the ground if they're being used for plastic. We're finding plastic, microplastics, in bottled and tap water, 94 percent of the samples in a recent study, and the U.S. was the highest level of concentration for that amongst the 14 who were studied. There'll be as much plastic as fish in the ocean by 2050. Experts say to look at disposable, single-use plastic, that's what we're doing. These polystyrene foam, in particular, affects animals, here squirrels and seagulls trying to get food residue off of this synthetic material. The Los Angeles Times, not a radical organization, has said it's time to phase out all single-use plastics. Brookline can be proud, we're doing a lot already. In 2012, Select Person Heller brought forth our existing food container law, but now we're going to expand on it, as Mr. Dempsey mentioned. I'm not going to reiterate those, but I will show you some pictures of some of the alternatives. We're still allowing polypropylene, which is a fossil fuel-based plastic, but it's less toxic than the ones that have been mentioned and is more price competitive. In some ways, this is going to be Back to the Future with paper and aluminum, wooden stirs, compostable plastics, lots of innovative things happening with those. People are sending me all kinds of things in the mail, and pasta straws, who knows what we'll see in 2020. We have incorporated community feedback along the way. I want to thank all the committees that we worked with. We've been working on this since 2016 at the Brookline Coolidge Corner Merchants Association. Based on feedback we heard, we limited the retail ban to just foam. Prior to filing the article, we worked with EDAB and decided to eliminate catering businesses, those catering orders from businesses that are primarily in the catering business. Finally, at the April EDAB vote, they suggested we move the date out from 2019 for some of it to 2020, and we did that. Our proposals are based on similar laws. Nantucket, Oakland, and Santa Cruz will still be ahead of us, but we'll be catching up with communities like Cambridge, Williamstown, Provincetown, and even Zimbabwe. I want to point out that, you know, the litter problem is real, we hope it'll be reduced. These are pictures, notice some of these are next to recycling and trash containers. It's not enough for some people. Here are straws and stirs, maybe you overlook those, you don't notice them. I see them, I can hardly walk without seeing them. Packing peanuts, a scourge, I'm sure you've all encountered in your yards. So join with SWAC, the Green Caucus, the Brookline Green Space Alliance, Representative Frank Smizik, the Advisory Council on Public Health, EDAB wants to move the date, the Brookline School Committee for the School Impact, the Select Board, the Advisory Committee with some amendments, which we hope will be addressed in the existing language and existing exemptions. I hope some of you got to talk to some of the young students from the Driscoll Environmental Club. The Environmental Action Club might have been here tonight, except it's senior prom. So please vote favorable action on Article 31. Thank you.
Okay, before we go on to Ms. Heller, I have to, with great regret, rescind... Before we go on to Ms. Heller, I have to, with great regret, rescind a comment I made before we started Article 31, and that was that there was no opposition to any further articles on the warrant. That's incorrect. There is vigorous opposition to the motion offered under Article 32, the next one. So we will have a debate, no uncertain terms, under Article 32. And while I'm at it, I might as well correct my snide remark about Cal Coolidge. Coolidge Corner was not named after Calvin Coolidge. It was named after a grocer, I believe, named Coolidge. So with all, having gotten that out of the way, Ms. Heller. Sorry for the interruption.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Nancy Heller, for unanimous Select Board. This proposal extends the protections against the use of plastic and take-out food containers packaged within Brookline. Our original protections against polystyrene voted in November 2012, but there have been advances in our understanding of the toxicity of certain plastics and our concern about the degree to which our earth, especially oceans, are suffering from the pollution of plastics. Under this new proposed article, polystyrene containers, and that's both rigid and foam, I don't like to correct my friend John Dempsey, but it's both rigid and foam, is number six on the recycle scale, remain banned, but the ban is now extended to include foodware like cutlery and straws and stirs, which could be made of polystyrene. The reason is that the former Department of Public Health Commissioner had said that the original polystyrene ban did not include those things. So that's why this article is necessary to expand that. In addition, plastic containers and foodware made of polyethylene terephthalate, which is number-one on the recycle scale, and those made of polyvinyl, which is number-three on the recycle scale, for those of you who think in those terms, I always look at the bottom and see what it is, those would now be banned. The petitioner is proposing these. You've heard that they are made of benzene, in the case of number-one, and polyvinyl chloride, in the case of number-three, and they are unhealthy and damaging to our environment. The immediate health drawbacks have been postulated but not completely documented, but this warrant article, quote, "promotes the long-term public health of the planet", in the words of the Advisory Council on Public Health. The ban isn't effective until January of 2020. You've heard that, at least the provisions about using these various materials. That time delay gives the businesses time to learn how to comply with the bylaw, to use current inventories, to ascertain if they could obtain exemptions under Section 3 of the bylaw. The Select Board can understand the anxiety of businesses and healthcare facilities, but we believe that the exemption provisions are strong enough to protect those businesses and healthcare providers from undue hardship, while providing flexibility to redefine our understanding of undue hardship. And let me give you a couple of examples. It's clear that the foodware and container industry will need to comply with many even more stringent bans. The European Union is considering a ban on single-use products like straws and is considering proposals to shift the burden of the cleanup of waste onto the industry. That would be a major shakeup. Britain has committed itself to banning the sale of plastic straws and single-use containers. So as humankind everywhere grapples with the health and environmental damage that is synonymous with plastic, manufacturers are figuring out ways to provide us with products that are biodegradable. We have many more than we did six years ago.
One minute.
Compostable, durable, but durable and reusable. As that happens, our health department will issue fewer and fewer exemptions as more reasonably-priced, environmentally-friendly products are developed. Let us push the envelope further in Brookline to transition to food service products that can help us protect ourselves, our families, our communities, our planet. Please vote favorable action on the motion before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnbaum. No, we'll hear from Mr. Burnbaum first. It's always entertaining.
Let's hope so. There's something about plastic that brings up this.
Who are you?
Ben Burnbaum, at-large member of the Advisory Committee. And those of you who know the Advisory Committee or people on it know that during town meeting season, we rise early every morning and say to ourselves, what are we going to do about these warrant articles that will keep the Select Board from screwing the whole thing up? Meanwhile, the Select Board rises at the same time and says to each other, to themselves, what are we going to do about the Advisory Committee to keep them from messing up town meeting? I have to say tonight, I'm here to say you won't have that sort of excitement. The Advisory Committee will not be offering a motion, though you may have seen our amendments on this. I call it purple because I didn't have as big a Crayola box as the moderator clearly had when he was a young man, but the purple paper you picked up today, and were not because there was a perfect storm of miscommunication, which ended with this being submitted to you too late for us, that is, for me, for the Advisory Committee to offer it, to offer the amendments that are in it. And these were, in fact, you know, perfectly innocent errors, an email that flew past home plate and ended up in the tall grass at the fence, and nobody found it until too late. And then another email that had some rather ambiguous language in it, was interpreted differently by different people. And so this did arrive too late, and there are no hard feelings. Apologies have been tendered, and we move on. I do want to, with the moderator's permission, I would like to just point to the two amendments that we would have proposed. Is that okay, Mr. Moderator?
Sure.
One was, you sound delirious with excitement. One was a, both of them were minor, to tell you the truth, which I'm pleased to say. There was not going to be a knock-down, drag-out battle on the floor of town meeting over this warrant article. They pertain to catering, as you heard from the proponents. The caterers who get 50 percent or more of their business from catering, they may also run a restaurant or something, 50 percent or more, of which there are three licensed in Brookline, will not need to accommodate the article because, at least for the time being, it would raise their prices. These folks compete with caterers all over Massachusetts and perhaps other places, too. And a number of groups in town felt it was an unfair burden upon them, commercial burden, competitive burden. The Advisory Committee also believed that the aspirant caterers in this town, essentially restaurant owners and so on, about 20 of them, as I recall, who may have 1 percent of their business as caterers, or 3 percent, or 5 percent, or 20 percent, that they, too, ought to have the advantage of not being subject to this until, as John Dempsey pointed out, in a couple of years, things will have changed and we'll all be on the same footing, as was the case, by the way, with plastic bags, as was the case some years ago with smoking in restaurants. There was great concern then, I recall, that our restaurants would lose a terrible amount of business. Well, guess what? Didn't work that way. The second point on which we disagreed was a small...
Which will be briefed for...
Sure, I will. Sorry. Was a matter of straws that are used in nursing homes, hospitals, and other kinds of health, people who do healthcare, institutions that do healthcare. And these are plastic straws that are bendable. And those of you who have had, I presume all of you have, have had some experience of visiting a nursing home or a hospital, you know what I'm talking about. Some people can only take nutrition through these, and we wanted to exclude them from, not force them to go to the health department and get some relief that they could simply go on using the straws. Again, these are small matters, and these were our only concerns. Thank you very much.
Is there a second? There's a emphatic second. No, we've had the question called and seconded. I have Ms. Gilman, Mr. Christ, and Ms. Granoff poised to speak. On the motion to terminate debate requires a two-thirds vote. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On the main motion...
I just have a question.
No, 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 Ms. Granoff. Debate's been terminated. I'm sorry.
I just have a question about the Advisory Committee's...
No, sorry.
Okay, sorry.
On the motion on the orange supplement, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, the motion carries unanimously. The motion offered by the petitioners under Article 32 is on page 1 of the brown, I guess, the brown-tan supplement, that the Section 3.1.3 of the town bylaws be amended to include the language in the second paragraph, beginning, "The Select Board shall not enter into or authorize any agreement, etc.," having to do with settlement agreements, and you'll hear more about that. It's, I have, that's the motion that the petitioners would like to have come before you. However, none of the petitioners is a town meeting member. Is there a town meeting member who would move the motion on page 1 of the supplement number 1? Is there a second?
Second.
Very well. It's been moved and seconded. I call on Brooks Ames.
My name is Brooks Ames. I am a resident of Brookline, speaking for the petitioners. Article 32 does two things. The first thing it does is it prohibits the town from entering into nondisclosure agreements in three classes of cases: claims for harassment, claims for retaliation, and claims of discrimination. The second thing it does is it requires the town to publicize the financial terms of any settlement the town enters into on one of those claims. What the article does not do, and I think this is important to lay out, the article does not require somebody who has settled a claim to publicize the details of the claim. They're not required to go in front of a camera and talk about their claim. It also doesn't require the town to publicize the details of the claim, with the exception of the financial settlement. The town is not required to publicize the name of the claimant, the name of the person being accused in the case of harassment or discrimination. None of that is required. My fellow petitioners will lay out some broader points, but I wanted to address just a few of the objections that have been raised along the way when we came before the Advisory Committee, before the Select Board. One of the issues that I heard from the Select Board was that there were privacy laws that would prohibit this article from going into effect, that this article was inconsistent with certain privacy laws that are part of our state statutes. I believe that's not true. In 2013, the Sagamore was able, I'm sorry, not the Sagamore, I like the Sagamore, but it wasn't the Sagamore. It was the TAB. The TAB was able to force the town of Brookline to reveal that we had paid $80,000 to settle a claim of racial discrimination, which was brought by a dean who was passed over for the top position at Brookline High School. The Secretary of State's office ruled that the town council's position, which was that revealing the settlement amount would violate the dean's privacy, that that was a no-go. That position was rejected. So it's simply not the case that the privacy laws would prevent the town from publicizing the amounts of settlements. Another point that's been made is that this article would tie the hands of victims, and perhaps a victim may choose to want a nondisclosure, choose to not want the details of their claim to be public. And that's a serious concern and one that we took seriously. What we learned in the course of the hearing process was that the town does not settle claims that are internal claims. In other words, if you bring a claim to HR, the town is not going, no matter how good the claim is, apparently, the town is not going to settle it out of court, pay you some money, say, here's a nondisclosure, and go on your way, move on. The town does not do that. There are nine settlements that are listed in a spreadsheet that was provided in your supplemental reports, and what we learned during the process was that in all nine of those cases, the person who received a settlement had to bring a case either to the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination, or to civil court, or both. Sometimes they go to MCAD and then to civil court. So in every case that there's a financial settlement, the complainant, the claimant, has already laid out the details.
You have one minute.
Already put their name out there, already put the details of their claim out there. And what I mean by that is, when you file a complaint and it's under oath in the Mass Commission Against Discrimination, it becomes a public record. That is a public record. Now, there was some controversy about this when we went before the Select Board, so I...
Thirty seconds.
I looked into it, and the Sagamore made a public records request way back when, in 2012, and they received the complaint that Dean Mims had filed against the town as a public record. So it's simply a fact that all these details are already out there. So when a woman or a man comes forward with a complaint...
Please conclude, Mr. Ames.
It's going to be a public record regardless. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Green.
So I don't really have anything to add to the petitioner's description of his warrant article. The board, the Select Board, voted 4-0 with one abstention for no action on April 10, 2018, on Article 32. For, among other reasons, town council advised the board that if passed, despite what Mr. Ames indicated, the amendment would be inconsistent with a number of statutes aimed at protecting the privacy of citizens, such as Chapter 214, Section 1B, which I will read, it says, "A person shall have a right against unreasonable, substantial, or serious interference with his privacy. The Superior Court shall have jurisdiction and equity to enforce such right and in connection therewith to award damages." Town council also indicated that it would be inconsistent with the public records law. Mr. Ames disputes that, but I think the point is, is that the public records law does provide an opportunity for a plaintiff to keep such information private if he desires. There's no guarantee it's going to work, but we don't think that that should be discarded through this warrant article. So 4-0-1, no action. Thank you.
Mr. Huggins.
I will be brief. My name is Scott Huggins. I lived in Brookline for over 40 years. I lived in Brookline for over 40 years. I think that the town likes to hide behind protecting the victims. If it's an issue of privacy, then let that be on the victim to make that decision whether or not they want to keep it private, or whether or not they want to speak. If the town requires for them to sign a hush clause in order to settle, then that choice isn't on the victim. The Me Too movement has forced change, and that's because stuff wasn't able to be kept a secret. And then people knew what was going on, and then they couldn't do it anymore. The town, some people in the town hide behind the protection of the victims, but yet the victims are always the ones that are pushed out, and the perpetrators are the ones that are protected. We have to decide whether or not we truly want change in Brookline, whether we truly want this to be a diverse and totally inclusive town, or whether or not we want to protect the image of Brookline.
I apologize to town meeting. I did not realize Mr. Huggins was not a current resident, so you didn't have the opportunity to prevent him from speaking.
He's a current resident.
In any event, he probably would have...
He is a current resident.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said you were a former resident.
Forty years.
Okay. All right, I apologize. And Mr. Nero, would you come forward, please?
Good evening. Christine Westfall, speaking for the advisory committee. The advisory committee voted 32 to one for no action on this article. And the reason that we voted for no action on this article is that the article would prevent the town from entering into nondisclosure agreements. We have some serious concerns about the town not being able to enter into nondisclosure agreements. Often with these cases, there are two sides, and the advisory committee felt that the nondisclosure agreements sometimes help reach an amic, well, not amicable, but sometimes reach an agreement, and the nondisclosure agreements always are with cases that are settled. In all of those cases, the advisory committee was aware of, and the petitioner asked for them, so they're on the back of the tan sheet for the last 10 years. The plaintiffs were represented by lawyers, and they agreed to the nondisclosure agreements. It was not forced. The Me Too movement relied on publicity for cases that were kept completely off the radar. It's not applicable here. As Mr. Ames pointed out, virtually all of these cases are thoroughly investigated before they're settled, and much of the information is public. What isn't public is the ultimate settlement. And I would suggest to you that that is problematic in terms of achieving settlement. You often have people who feel that they don't want to, for instance, admit wrongdoing because they don't feel that they did something wrong. If you look at the cases, we're not looking at a situation where we got lots of repeat offenders doing the same thing over and over again. We all know what happened in terms of the monetary settlements, and we feel that this would really disadvantage the town in terms ultimately of settling these cases in a way that is amenable to everyone. Because they are settlements, they are amenable to everyone, and the plaintiffs in them, as I said, all have counsel. Those were the things that really drove the advisory committee to feel that no action on this was the appropriate vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ames.
I'm a director of the Brookline Justice League, which is a petitioner, co-petitioner of this article. We are a nonprofit with a broad charge to promote justice in Brookline. The Brooklyn Justice League filed this article for two reasons. Number one, to prevent the town from silencing women and others who report harassment, discrimination, and retaliation. The Me Too movement has revealed how institutions protect wrongdoers and their own reputations by isolating and silencing victims of harassment. But as incident after incident has come to light, I have seen women feel compelled to speak out and share how nondisclosure agreements silence them and protect the perpetrators. In our own Brookline, we have knowledge that complaints against supervisors, which take a great deal of courage to report, have been followed by the termination of the complainants while the alleged perpetrators remain employed. A gross case of sexual harassment, gender discrimination, and retaliation with probable cause findings by MCAD has not made it into the TAB, and therefore it seems to not exist. The alleged victim has no job while the alleged perpetrator is still on the payroll supervising. Taxpayers paid $231,000 to cover this path, this up last year with a settlement that included a gag order. The warrant article would allow women in these circumstances to speak out about their experiences and to warn and inform others. It would allow women to say "me too" instead of being silenced and isolated. The second reason is to deter the town from protecting perpetrators with public money. Publicizing the amounts we pay to settle harassment, discrimination, and retaliation cases should have a deterrent effect. The public is smart enough to know that the amount spent to settle these cases includes more than the published settlement amount. It includes, I'm sorry, in addition, there are costs for outside lawyers, reviewers, investigators, and more. Taxpayers do not want to pay to defend perpetrators. Taxpayers do not want to pay to silence victims. The fact that the settlements are published will help deter the town's administration from treating the public's money as a bottomless defense fund for the mostly white, male supervisors who are typically accused of misconduct. This will serve as an incentive for the town to address the perpetrator's conduct in a more effective way. The current approach is to attack the reporter and protect the accused regardless of the merits of the claim. The town's response to this warrant article demonstrates a lack of transparency and accountability. In the hearings leading up to tonight, we were unable to obtain the following information from the town administration: the number of instances in which the complainant asked for the nondisclosure provision. We believe the town presents nondisclosure as a take it or leave it, and it is not requested by the complainant, who has already come forward by filing an MCAD complaint or civil action in court. Another question: how many of the perpetrators or alleged perpetrators are still working for the town? We believe the town has never fired a perpetrator. Another question: how much time typically passes between a claim, when a claim is made and when the claim is resolved? We believe the town drags these cases on for years to degrade stress and detriment of the victim...
You have one minute.
...or complainant. The purpose of this article is to change things for the better. The article creates a deterrent to sweeping immoral and unlawful actions under the rug by making our local government accountable to us, both financially and morally. I urge you to vote in favor of Article 32.
Thank you, Mr. Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Anthony Nero, Precinct 5, speaking for myself. Mr. Moderator, before I make my brief comments, may I ask a question about conflict of interests? Thank you. I guess my question is, is there a conflict of interest that should have been disclosed by Attorney Brooks Ames, as he has a lawsuit pending against the town and with a financial interest in said lawsuit? And this is, I think, germane, I think that should have been disclosed, but I don't know if I'm right or wrong on it.
I think we're all aware of it and can take his remarks in the light of his involvement with that litigation. Go ahead, Mr. Nero.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, I am an attorney, as some of you may know. I'm a public defender. I do not practice in civil rights litigation, though I do work to enforce the constitutional rights of my clients against government abuse. I did clerk for a couple of years while I was in law school with Thrones, Garrity, and Hedges, where the majority of their practice was criminal defense and also civil rights litigation, and I've worked on a number of such cases as a law clerk. My take on this, and I would urge that town meeting vote no action. I guess I'll start with the positive, because I don't want to be all negative. The information on the back of the supplement, the eight or so lawsuits, I think that's important information for taxpayers to have. I want to know where my tax money is being spent. I also want to be able to look and see if there are any departments with, you know, repeated history that we need to have closer review. This was obtained, I believe, by a Freedom of Information Act request through the town. You know, I think that we should have this on a microsite and have it updated regularly on the town's website. This warrant article doesn't get that done, but I just think that's something that we should all think about, because it is good information for us to know and have readily accessible. Now to the negative. This does not empower complainants whatsoever. It does not give them a choice as to whether or not the town can disclose unsavory facts in litigation through a settlement, whether it is allegations made in defense of the plaintiff or just facts about the case they don't want them to know. Now, the petitioner said to you, well, hey, nothing in here makes the town disclose facts, nothing in here makes the complainant disclose facts, sure, but nothing in here gives the plaintiff, the victim, the opportunity to say, I want this to be private. And so if this is really geared towards protecting victims' rights, why take that right away? To give them the power and not speak for them. The second point is plaintiffs can reject these clauses and elect to go to trial. That is their right. That's why they brought a lawsuit. And if their case is meritorious, and they want justice, and they are not satisfied with the town's nondisclosure clause, then they can reject that nondisclosure clause in negotiations. And it will be up to the town to decide whether or not they are going to cede that point or go to trial. Victims are not placed in an untenable position with these clauses. There is a choice. Sometimes it's a financial choice, but to say the town drags on these lawsuits, lawsuits take time. There is procedure. There is discovery. These are not things to be rushed, especially when people's careers are on the line, people's reputations are on the line. And that's why we have juries, and that's why we have rules of criminal procedure, that's why we have rules of civil procedure to follow. I also just think this is, it's financially unsound, and this is the point I'll leave at. If the concern here is, well, this is how we spend the taxpayer money, think of it this way. Let's say there is a claim that lacks merit, and the town is looking at this claim, and they believe that they will prevail at a jury trial. They file a motion to dismiss...
You have one minute.
Thank you. They will file a motion to dismiss before the trial, asking for summary judgment, and a federal magistrate or federal judge will say, well, you know, there's enough here in the allegations to at least let this go to a jury. Doesn't say you're not necessarily going to win, but you have enough to take this to a jury and let them decide. Well, the town can say, all right, we're going to spend $80,000 on attorney fees and win the trial, or we'll spend $3,000, $15,000, $49,500 to settle the claim.
Thirty seconds.
It's the financially responsible thing to do. That's something I want my town to be able to do. And they're not going to do that without a nondisclosure clause, okay? And that's something that we need to consider. So I understand some of the spirit behind this warrant article, but it's misplaced. It doesn't protect victims. It doesn't protect taxpayers. And I would urge everyone to vote no action on this. Thank you.
Okay, the question's been called. Is there a second?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll allow it. I think all three of the petitioners have had an opportunity to persuade town meeting. May I have my question first, Mr. Moderator? And you've heard they, no, you may not, until we vote on terminating debate.
Request for a recorded vote?
Yeah, hold on, please. You'll have your opportunity. The, I have the following speakers signed up in favor of this motion: Mr. Margolis, Mr. Oni, and Mr. Conquest. See Mr. Fisher at the microphone. On the motion for the question to terminate debate, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. The motion before us is, this is Article 32, main motion. I think I anticipate a recorded vote.
Request for a recorded vote.
Okay. Are there 35 town meeting members who want a recorded vote? Yes, there are. The motion is on page one of supplement number one, the tan supplement, and a yes vote will be in favor of this motion to amend the bylaws, a no vote will be in opposition to this motion. Go ahead, anytime. Okay, please, the voting period has commenced. Remember, you might have to hit the power button in the lower right to have your vote recorded. It should tell you, the display should tell you what you voted and that it was received. And if you got that message back, you can be sure that your vote was recorded. Motion fails by a vote of 31 in favor, 156 opposed, and nine abstentions. Article 33. The motion under Article 33 is on page 33-4, that the town adopt a resolution urging a review of the town's practices regarding non-electronic communications. Moved by Mr. Gordon, seconded by Mr. Lescoyer. Remember, as you leave, to put your handheld devices in the receptacles in the back of the auditorium. Otherwise, you'll have the town clerk chasing around after you. On that motion, I call on Mr. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Neil Gordon, town meeting member, Precinct 1, speaking on behalf of myself, John Doggett, Dennis Dowdy, the petitioners of this resolution. The petitioners comprise the administration and finance subcommittee of the advisory committee, and the seeds of this resolution were planted during our review of the town's fiscal 2019 budget, more specifically, the more than $500,000 that we as a town spend annually on printing and postage. Surely, we thought with changes in technology, these straightforward budget line items could be reduced if they were reviewed in some level of detail by a committee that could take a fresh look at what the town was doing and how the town was doing it. We, as petitioners, are not asking someone else to study this. Two of us, what were we thinking, have already agreed to serve on a committee that would be charged with studying this subject. Let me take a moment to explain what this resolution is not suggesting. It doesn't take away hard copies and mailings that you, as a town meeting member, want to get. It won't force you to receive tax bills electronically and pay them online. It won't eliminate the notices that you currently want to receive. It won't eliminate the notices that you currently want to receive, as in a butter or otherwise. It might, though, identify mailings that you or those sitting to the left or right of you don't want to receive, except electronically. It's intuitive to the petitioners that there are savings to be had, and that in the process, pretty much as a freebie, services can be improved. As I said, two of us are already committed to studying exactly that. Please vote favorable action on this resolution.
Mr. Moderator, my name is David Lescoye, precinct 11, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. The motion under Article 33 urges the Select Board to undertake a review of the town's non-electric, non-electronic communication to determine whether the town could realize savings through improved use of electronic technology. To what extent could electronic technology replace printed communication? Are there other ways to make improvements with electronic communication, including, for example, when sending notifications to residents? Cost savings is the motivation of this article. However, the committee discussed possible additional benefits for more efficient communications with residents, particularly pertaining to the capacity to communicate warnings or alerts to residents from the police, for example. The Advisory Committee concluded that the actual outcome of this investigation is unknown but is likely to be positive and beneficial. The revisions to the petitions articles shown in the combined reports were editorial, with final language of the motion improved, but content was not materially changed. By a vote of 22 in favor, none opposed, and one abstention, the Advisory Committee voted to recommend favorable action on this motion.
Before we hear from Ms. Hamilton, I change the vote total on Article 32. One more negative vote, so the final vote is 31 in favor, 157 opposed, and nine abstentions. Ms. Hamilton.
Thank you. Heather Hamilton, speaking for our unanimous Select Board. The Board certainly applauds the intent of this resolution, but notes that past efforts at paper reduction have been met with staunch resistance at town meeting. The Board is willing to try again to see if there is low-hanging fruit that would save the town postage and mailing costs while improving communications with residents. The Board is appreciative that two of the petitioners are willing to serve on the study committee and looks forward to learning more about what can be done. The Board voted favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Doggett, precinct 13. I'd just like to add briefly to the remarks from my fellow petitioner, Neil Gordon, that timely and efficient electronic communications not only offer potential cost savings and efficiencies for existing paper-based communications, but also offer significant potential for more effective and timely communications to all residents. This is a printout of an email that I received in March, along with all of my fellow precinct 12 and precinct 13 town meeting members. This was listed electronic when it arrived to me, and it was from the police department, and it was concerning a rash of break-ins on Clinton Road and on cars, and ended with this thought, "As town meeting members, we ask you to share this information with your neighbors." Precinct 13 has about 2,500 registered voters, precinct 12 the same. There are more residents. Clinton Road neighborhood is affected here. I've got email addresses of maybe dozens of constituents, of which I often don't know the addresses or the neighborhood they live in. So there is no database that I have, or in fact, there's no database the town has, for addressing communications to residents, and particularly residents in a neighborhood or a particular precinct, for example. And clearly, physical mailing of a letter is not appropriate, expensive, and timely. So what's a town meeting member to do, other than file a warrant article? We, the petitioners, believe that what is needed is the ability to have, for the town to have a timely and efficient electronic messaging system to communicate information and urgent situations to residents, townwide, locally, to a precinct, to a neighborhood, to a street, to a property, or an individual. If we are able to have, if we are to have an electronic infrastructure for the town to communicate efficiently for current paper-based communications, then we should be able to use that infrastructure for an efficient, for a more efficient and timely communication to all residents. The petitioners are asking the Select Board to establish a new committee or charge an existing committee to study both the cost savings aspect and the broader use of timely electronic communications, and to make recommendations for implementation. Please join with us and vote favorable action on warrant article 33. Thank you.
Now, the, the motion under Article, that's the, you've heard from all of the speakers who had signed up. The motion in its pristine clean, so-called clean version is on pages 33-5 over to 33-6. Those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries by a majority vote. Now, ladies and gentlemen, it's our usual procedure to conclude the article that we've been working on at 10:30, and then take a motion to adjourn, but we have three articles to go, one of which is a no action with no opposition, and the other two are, have respectively, three and four speakers signed up to speak and no speakers against. If someone wants to make a motion to adjourn, you have that right, but I don't see anybody leaping to the fore here. Article 34. The motion on Article 34 is on pages 34-4 at the bottom, over to 34-5. It's to honor the Brookline residents who died in the service of their country during World War I, moved by Mr. Gordon, seconded by Mr. Vitolo. Mr. Gordon. And whenever you're ready, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Neil Gordon, precinct one, town meeting member, member of the Advisory Committee, primary petitioner on Article 34, speaking as primary petitioner. The following are taken from the proceedings of the Brookline Historical Society at its annual meeting on January 30, 1919. At our meeting last January, the results seemed very doubtful, but in July, the tide turned, thanks largely to our American boys, and we all know the result. Our town has been largely represented in the Army and Navy, 1,841 young men. Our population is estimated at 37,000, so the above number is about 1/20th or 5% of the total. The proceedings continue. We are and have been living in such strenuous times and dealing with such momentous events. To the citizen living 50 or 100 years hence, what a wonderful history the war and its possible results will make. To the citizen living 100 years hence, that would be us. It's the 100th anniversary of America's participation in World War I, a war in which millions served, millions suffered, millions died, among them, the 62 boys of Brookline. As I noted at Brookline's Memorial Day ceremonies two years ago, to those who knew them, these men were more than simply names on a plaque or on a wall. They were husbands, fathers, sons, and brothers. The 62 names were read yesterday, and I will tonight mention just one. Albert Edward Scott was a member of Company H, 101st United States Infantry, Allied Expeditionary Force. For extreme gallantry and risk of life in combat with an armed enemy force, Albert Edward Scott was awarded the Distinguished Service Cross, an award second only to the Medal of Honor. Albert Edward Scott, Scotty, was a Brookline newsboy and a graduate of the devotion school. Scotty enlisted in the Army at age 15. On July 23, 1918, he was killed in action in France. Scotty was 16 years old. I ask for your vote of favorable action on Article 34.
Thank you.
The Myra Trachtenberg stool comes in handy. My name is Kim Smith, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Advisory Committee, which voted unanimously, unanimously in support of warrant article 34, the warrant, the resolution honoring 62 Brookline residents who died in World War I. Thank you, Neil Gordon, for bringing this resolution to town meeting during this year, the 100th anniversary of the war's end. I want to call your attention to page 34-4 of the combined reports, where author David Mark Goldstein provided information on the addresses and, in some cases, occupation of 19 of these men, which he called from their draft cards. Again, please join me in voting favorably on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franco.
Roll the question. Tell him a question.
Nope.
Ben Franco for unanimous Select Board. The Select Board unanimously recommends a vote of favorable action on Article 34 to honor the 62 Brookline residents who perished in World War I.
Thank you. On the motion on page, bottom of page 34-4 over to 34-5, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 35. Motion is on page 35-9, over to the middle of 35-10. Moved by Ms. Van Der Zeele and seconded by Mr. Leckler, that the town adopt a resolution calling for the United States to pull back from the brink and prevent nuclear war, et cetera, in the words of the motion, Ms. Van Der Zeele.
Good evening again, everybody. I'm Cornelia Van Der Zeele, town meeting member from precinct 15 and a member of the Steering Committee of the Greater Boston Chapter of Physicians for Social Responsibility. First of all, I'd like to express our appreciation for the help that we received from members of the Public Safety Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee and the Chair of the Advisory Committee in refining this warrant article. This is a resolution calling on the United States to back away from the brink of nuclear war. This is an effort by Physicians for Social Responsibility and the Union of Concerned Scientists seeking to build bipartisan support, both public and congressional, for fundamental changes in the U.S. nuclear policy in an effort to make not only the United States, but the entire world safer. The basis for this resolution comes from that joint effort, spearheaded mainly by residents of Massachusetts. But there's a movement on this issue throughout the United States, from California to Maine. A broad range of local, state, national, and international organizations support and endorse this effort, including faith and secular groups, organizations dedicated to peace and justice, among others. peace and justice, among others. For a full list to date, you can consult our website, www dot prevent nuclear war dot org. I'm not sure that I need to convince any in this audience of the intolerable and existential threat posed by nuclear weapons to all of humanity and life on Earth. Even a limited nuclear exchange between India and Pakistan, or say, the United States and North Korea, would kill many thousands outright and lead to the starvation of an estimated two billion more due to nuclear famine. But there really is no such thing as a limited exchange, since first strikes would need to be directed toward multiple sites, and retaliatory strikes would be forthcoming. There have been multiple times when one nation has perceived a nuclear threat and was on the threshold of firing what it thought would be a retaliatory strike, only to see in retrospect that the threat was due to an error on the part of the warning system or a misinterpretation of a natural phenomenon. There's been a deep concern that an accidental firing of a nuclear weapon might occur. Daniel Ellsberg said, "The strategic nuclear system is more prone to false alarms, accidents, and unauthorized launches than the public, and even most high officials have, has ever been aware." This, of course, does not address the moral and undemocratic implications of such an indiscriminate use of a weapon of mass destruction. There's no way to prevent collateral damage from the detonation of a single nuclear weapon, as it would lead to the loss of lives of thousands of civilians. In addition, U.S. nuclear weapons are under the sole control of our President. It would be most unlikely for there to be any discussion of their use among our elected representatives, nor would there be a declaration of, of war. The expenditure of one point two to two billion dollars on nuclear modernization, and I say that in quotes, is really an escalation, since it will inevitably be, uh, lead to a renewed nuclear arms race. Those dollars could be better spent on our crumbling infrastructure and other pressing needs here at home. We are already spending two million dollars an hour on maintaining this arsenal, while the American Society of Civil Engineers gives our country failing or near-failing grades on our infrastructure. Groups such as Physicians for Social Responsibility have been working on nuclear disarmament and abolition for decades. It was the impetus for its, uh, formation here in the Boston area in nineteen sixty-one. Subsequently, international, uh, international Physicians for the Prevention of Nuclear War was formed, initially bringing physicians together from the United States and the U.S.R., but now with representatives in sixty-four countries. In two thousand and six, the International Campaign for the Abolition of Nuclear Weapons was formed. It spearheaded and recently helped promulgate the U.N. Treaty on the Prohibition of Nuclear Weapons by one hundred and twenty-two nations, including and the Holy See. It has been signed by fifty-eight of these nations and ratified by ten as of the beginning of this month. None of the nuclear arms states, nor their allies, with the exception of the Netherlands, participated in the crafting of the treaty. In December of two thousand seventeen, ICANN received the Nobel Peace Prize for their work on this treaty. There's increasing interest in nuclear weapons abolition in our nation as well. Our own Senator Markey has filed a bill in the U.S. Senate with a companion bill in the House sponsored by Representative Lou to prevent first use by our President. There are additional bills filed by Adam Smith, the ranking member of the House Armed Services Committee. There's been progress on this front in Massachusetts, the municipalities of Northampton-
Yeah, please conclude, Ms. Van Der Zeele.
Yes, I will. Plainfield and Cummings have passed resolutions similar to this one, and their efforts in four or five other communities. This month, the New England Journal of Medicine published-
That doesn't sound like a conclusion to me.
Yes, this is, this is. The two thousand seventeen Nobel Peace Prize and the Doomsday Clock, the end of nuclear war or the end of us, that really says it all. It's well past time to address this existential threat in the only way possible, to abolish nuclear weapons once and for all. Let's start to work on this most important project. Please vote favorable action on warrant Article thirty-five.
Thank you.
Janice Khan, Precinct Fifteen, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. The petitioners filed this resolution as a call to action for our elected officials in Washington to make nuclear disarmament a focus of U.S. national security policy, and for the U.S. to lead in global efforts to combat the increasing threat of a nuclear war. A vote of favorable action would send a copy of this resolution to Congressman Joe Kennedy, Senators Elizabeth Warren and Ed Markey, and President Trump. The Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on warrant Article thirty-five.
Mr. Leckler, would you come forward, please?
Heather Hamilton, speaking for our unanimous Select Board. The Select Board agrees with the intent of this article. This article follows a two thousand nine special town meeting resolution concerning the President of the United States and the pursuit of a verifiable treaty to eliminate nuclear weapons. It was expressed that town meeting has no control over the new, over the denuclearization of the country, a sentiment that has been shared in the past, but the Board acknowledges that, that it is good to go on record that the town has expressed an opinion. The Board voted favorable action.
Mr. Leckler.
Mr. Moderator, in the interest of time, I'd like to forego my remarks, uh, which I think have been very adequately addressed by the previous speakers.
You have a hundred and seventy-five grateful town meeting members. Mr. Friedman.
Harry Friedman, Precinct Twelve.
Undaunted.
Undaunted as ever. I take objection only to one thing in this article. It's the first dot point under the further resolved, which says that, uh, it renounces the option of using nuclear weapons first. I find this mildly reminiscent of the nineteen thirty-three Oxford Union Resolution in which Oxford students voted that they would not fight for king or country. This was used by the enemies of Great Britain as a sign of Britain's weakness, and it, in fact, increased the odds of war rather than decreased it. I think this does the same, and I urge a no vote.
Thank you. On the motion on page thirty-five dash nine to ten, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a vote of a hundred and sixty-seven to two. Article thirty-six. No action is moved under Article thirty-six by Ms. Heller, seconded by Mr. Doughty. And, uh, there's, no affirmative motion has been put forward, so we'll hear from Ms. Heller. This concerns, uh, the renaming of Washington Street.
Nancy Heller for, uh, the Board of, the Select Board. Um, this article is not being moved by the petitioner at this time. I understand that the petitioners can, and, and those who agree, uh, that this article should come forward at some point, are considering options to move it forward at a later date. But the Select Board urges no action. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Moderator, I don't think there's anything for the Advisory Committee to add. The motion is not being moved.
Mr. Nero, do you wish to be heard? On the motion for no action, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Uh, motion carries by a majority vote. I will now take a motion to dissolve the two thousand eighteen annual town meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Town meeting is dissolved. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.